Good evening, I call this regular meeting of the Minnehaw County Planning Commission to order. As a courtesy tonight, make sure your cellphones are turned off. The first thing I want to do is elect, we have a new Commissioner, Mike Ralston from Crooks. We'd like to introduce him to everyone. He's our newest replacement and Bonnie is up for, just took another term. So, we'll start with our first order of business tonight is election of officers. Since this is the first meeting of the year, we will begin with the election of Chairman and Vice Chairman. I will entertain motion for nominees of the Chairperson position. And nominees will be required to have a second before any vote. Any nominations for Chair?
I nominate Mike Cypher.
Second. Any other nominations? Okay, we have one position. Any other nominations for Chair? Any other nominations for Chair? Seeing none, we will call for a vote. All those in favor of Cypher being Chairman signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay, then I will continue. There was no coup in the crowd, so we'll let that go.
Might have been a boo, but no coup.
Alright, so now we go to Vice Chairman. We need nominations for Vice Chairman.
Nominate Bonnie Duffy.
Okay, we have a nomination, Bonnie?
Second.
Second. Any other nominations for Chairman, Vice Chairman? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bonnie as Vice Chairman signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign carries. So Bonnie will serve as Vice Chairman for this one-year term. Okay, regular meeting. Okay, we can start with, on the regular meeting, we now, the elections are complete. We'll begin the rest of the meeting with the consent agenda. Any action taken on the conditional use and agricultural tourism permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the Planning Office by Monday, January 30th at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, February 21st at or after 9:00 AM. Means that the County Commission are held in this same room. This time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. The minutes from the November 24th meeting are included on the consent agenda. Are there any objections from the Planning Commission members on any item on the consent Okay, seeing none, I will now read each item. Any member of the audience who objects to the item, please raise your hand and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the Commission later in the meeting. Okay, we'll start with item number one, which is, we already did, we completed the election of officers. Item number two is the, of the consent agenda, we start with item number two, which is approval of the minutes. Item number three is conditional use permit number 17-01 to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building requesting 2,148. Petitioners David Lentz, he's located at 43, or 25, 345, 459th Avenue, approximately five miles north of Humboldt. Item number four, conditional use per, oh, that's, item four has been moved to the regular agenda, correct?
Yep.
That's already done, correct? Or do we need a motion?
You can just pull it.
We'll just pull it, okay, that's going to the regular agenda. Okay, item number five, conditional use permit, 1703 to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building requesting 4,160 on property. This is Dudley Deffenbaum, who was the owner, it's at 206, 254, 459th Avenue. This is located approximately five miles southwest of Hartford, or it's a quarter mile south of Grass Lake. Okay, number six, anyone on that one? Okay, item number, excuse me?
You got 1703?
Okay, that's Dudley Deffenbaum's, okay? So that would be moved to the regular agenda. Conditional use permit number 1704 to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building requesting 2,400 square feet. Petitioners Cody Sunderman at 24926, 474th Avenue, approximately a half mile north of Baltic. Okay, item number seven, conditional use permit to allow equipment sales and service used truck dealership. This is basically in the Brower edition, right? And south of the interstate in Hartford. Vance Peterson is the petitioner. Anyone on that one? Okay, and number eight, preliminary subdivision plan 17-01. Petitioners Rebecca Eggers. It's a property owner is Lester's Citic Estates, approximately four miles north of Sioux Falls. Item, okay, that concludes this consent agenda. So we'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda and move item five to the regular agenda.
Some move.
Four and five, excuse me, four and five, that's right.
Some move.
Okay, we have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And now, we need to go move to the regular agenda.
And we, Chairman, I'd like to address item number nine first, just because we can dispense of it quickly. And I'd make a motion to amend the regular agenda to make item nine the first issue we address.
Okay, we have a motion to move number nine to our first item to be addressed. We have a second to that?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, item number nine, we will start with.
Mr. Chairman, you could announce also that...
Oh yes, if you're, if you're, if you have been approved, items number three, six, seven, eight, you are free to go.
Good evening, Commission. David Heinold, Planning Department. Item number nine is, recall from last meeting in November, November 28th, this item was deferred for two months to allow the petitioner or owner, Todd Snyder's RNS sanitation, additional time to accomplish the screening, as you can recall the last time. I'll go through this location, northeast corner, Wall Lake, right at the Wall Lake corner intersection there, property outlined in red. You have the building there. Moving forward, this is a picture of the aerial map, which shows the existing screening, which goes all the way around to here, and the area where the poles were in the ground as of the last meeting in November, but no fencing, no screening material was on that. Since the, the last time I was out there, the staff report, publishing the staff report and giving that information, the fence panels were not up installed, these were just recently installed as of the past, within the last week. And as you can see in the background, this is where the, those poles were, which now have the screening material on them from the residential property, which is just beyond the trees as you see in the background here. And this just gives you another image, as you can see, the residential property again on the backside, the background of this picture with that screening and then the storage area, outdoor storage area. These are the photos that I also included with that staff report with, without the screening there, so you can see the difference between the two. And this was a week ago.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I guess in, in the interest of brevity, I'd like to make a motion to dismiss this item inasmuch as the defect has been corrected.
Okay. Second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Motion and second to approve this, since it has been corrected. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, the thing has been corrected and will be accepted as it is. Anything else there, David?
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, so now we'll get back to the regular agenda. Conditional use permit number four, I will be recusing myself on this one, since I do business, I'm a, I live right in this neighborhood. And since the petitioner rents my land and stuff, I need to step back on this. So Vice Chairman Bonnie will take this one.
Good evening. Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. Item number four is conditional use permit number 17 to allow a Class C CAFO, which is 950 animal units on the property legally described as west half, southwest quarter, except tracks two through five Alderson addition, and tract one of Alderson addition in the southwest quarter, section 17, 101, 51, I believe. I didn't write that in. This property is located approximately one and a half miles northwest of Wall Lake and a half mile north of South Dakota Highway 42. The property owner currently operates two Class D CAFOs, which are less than 250 animal units or equal to, on these two parcels, one right here and one right here. The petitioner has submitted an application for 950 beef cattle operation or 950 animal units. This application is under the threshold that is required for state general wastewater permit. With this application, he has submitted a nutrient management plan and an operating plan. And as part of that, I'll go over what parts of his nutrient management plan, site plan and operating plan that is required as part of the conditional use permit requirements. So, the first requirement is the address of the property is on the plan and on the application, as well as the legal description is on the application and a general legal description is on the plan. The name of the project and/or business, which is the next requirement, is indicated as the Brian Alderson Beef Cattle Site, or as his operating plan calls it, the Alderson Feed Lot Improvement Project. The plan includes, let's see. The plan includes, which I don't have a picture, you have a picture in your packet, the, the scale to represent how large the items are, and several scaled drawings of how far distances they are from various property lines, as well as nearby landowners, nearby dwellings. All existing proposed buildings or additions is next one. They are located on the site plan as noted, and the current building that's on the south side of the site is noted to be turned into a commodity shed and no longer used for cattle in the plan. The dimensions of all buildings, he includes the dimensions of the new building as 70 feet by 332 feet with an attached work area of 70 by 60 feet. The distance from all buildings to property lines, the site plan does not have the setback to all property lines, but he does have the setback to the front yard, which is 430 feet from that. And using the scale, you can see that on the site plan that he is further than the seven feet required for side yard setbacks. It is noted that a parcel, which is on this large, is difficult to draw the property at scale when you're looking at a site plan, and so it's difficult to have all those dimensions on. The next requirement is the building height and number of stories. The petitioner has submitted sectional drawings with his building plans, and I have a correction to make. He noted that the building, that the dugout portion will be underground, so the building peak will be at about 23 feet, and that there will be the pit of about 12 feet underneath to hold the manure, and that would be the height of the building, one story. Again, the dimensions of all property lines, the dimensions are not all there, but he has a site plan in the small corner of the, the property line, not touching all of them. The next requirement is parking lots or spaces designate each space. The proposed land use is for agricultural uses, and the parking lot requirement is generally for industrial or commercial. He does have enough space in the lot to do maneuvering and parking for his feed operation. Screening, including height, location and type of material, and the landscape, scape setbacks and trees indicating species and materials to be used in landscaping. Submitted in the petitioner's operation plan, he has noted that the current site conditions has trees on the north side of the home site. Some rows of smaller trees are planted along the west property line, and that he has written in his plan that he plans on, another row will be added on the west side of the site. In addition to the trees, the proposed building is north of the bunk building, which will provide some buffer for landscaping to the south, in lieu of landscaping to the south. Landscape plan designated to assist in dispersal of odors. The written landscaping plan includes existing or proposed rows of trees to provide material to disperse and absorb odors. The primary odor control method will be the reduction of surface area where the current cattle are kept to where the proposed cattle will be kept. Next requirement, grading plan designed to help keep pens and solid waste containment areas dry. The animals and manure will both be located inside the proposed building. The site plan includes contours and a description that they will grade the water away from the building. The next requirement, location description of all animal waste facilities and structure. The submitted site plan includes only one animal waste facility that is located underneath a slatted floor where the cattle will be kept. The plan indicates manure will contain, containment will have the capacity for one year of operation. Alright, so those are the requirements of the site plan. As part of the requirements of the CAFO, or the ordinance, there's also setbacks. The 950 animal unit operation will require 1,980-foot buffer from dwelling church school business. The setback submitted by the petitioner shows that the two residential dwellings are located in the setbacks, which would be here and here. I have received the signed waiver from the petitioner's parents who live right here. All other setbacks, including streams and intermittent streams and the other neighbors, have been met. The ordinance includes several plans to be submitted with the application. One of them is the pest control plan, which the petitioner has noted that the reduction in surface area will help reduce pest, and that he will be willing to hire a company to control the rodents if a problem arises. The plan also notes that he will be, he will spray for flies when needed. The odor control plan notes that the, again, the reduction in surface area will decrease the odor. He submitted the South Dakota Odor Footprint Tool that he used, and I believe he will be describing that more when he comes up. And that shows that the new facility will have odor reductions compared to the existing facility as it is. Then the next plan he is required to have is a dead animal plan. He has one for general losses and catastrophic losses. Generally, he will have a rendering company come and retrieve the dead animals, and he'll have a stub wall to hide them from the right of way. For catastrophic animals, he has his site reviewed for soil qualities to see, to show that it is possible to bury the animals there, as well as contacts to where, who he needs to contact first before any excavating can happen. And then the final plan, it would be the manure management plan, and he has submitted a manure management plan that has been prepared in cooperation with the Natural Resources Conservation Surface. And he has maps and land showing all the setbacks that, where he can and cannot put his waste on the land. Alright, and then as part of the, any general conditional use permit, there are several factors that need to be addressed, and I will read those off as well. The first factor is the effect of the use of enjoyment of other property and surrounding area for the uses already permitted upon the property values within the surrounding area. The CAFO is located in a low-density, predominantly agricultural area. The site is currently operated by two Class D CAFOs, and therefore, this is basically an expansion of use. The proposed facility will have a smaller footprint, and as I noted, the odor footprint tool should, shows that it will reduce the odor emitted. And the petitioner needs to have waivers. That has come into question as I have presented the Planning Commission that one of the nearest neighbor has, does not believe that the odor, then the current condition is alright for their property, and I'm sure we'll hear about that as well. The effect upon the normal and orderly development and improvement to surrounding vacant properties for use is prominent in the area. The area is predominantly ag, and therefore, that portion will not likely be affected by this use. However, the intense land uses such as CAFOs, increase, and the increased number of CAFOs, residential uses may become less desirable close proximity because of smells and other issues. Future residential development will require to have the right to farm covenant placed in the deed prior to construction of the project. Number three, utilities, access road drainage for the facility. Proposed facility will be accessed off of 461 First Avenue, and the home site is just to the north. The driveway has already been installed. The facility has a slight plan that shows that drainage is generally to the south, and it's about 800 feet away from the nearest intermittent stream located approximately there. That off-street, number four, that off-street parking and loading requirements are met. The operation is a large site that will allow for loading and parking on the site. Number five, that measures are taken to control offensive odors, dust, fumes, noise, vibration, lighting, inclusive of signs, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. As noted before, the odor issue has been brought up, and the odor deduct, or the odor footprint tool has been used as a way to show the reduction odor. Number six, the health, safety and general welfare and public, of the public and the comprehensive plan. The proposed CAFO will have to comply with the conditions of the permit and the regulations of the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaw County. The rules and regulations are designed to allow for development while preventing much of potential harms that a CAFO facility may create. The facility is not required to obtain a state permit. However, the state will review the application if Minnehaw County deems a state permit to be necessary. The proposed CAFO is located firmly within the agricultural area of the envisioned 2035 comprehensive plan. In the plan, it describes as a goal to protect, preserve and promote agricultural uses in the economic, and the economic viability of farming operations. So, staff had, has the recommendation of 1702 to approve this, this project with the, the following conditions. One, that the facility is limited to 950 animal units in size. Two, that the CAFO shall comply with applicable regulations and zoning ordinance. Three, the facility shall conform to the submitted site plans. Any minor changes may be approved by the Planning Director and at the Minnehaw County Planning Department. Major changes will require an amendment to this permit in a public hearing. Four, the manure containment facility must be in conformance with South Dakota Department and Environmental and Natural Resources Design Standards for any newly constructed waste containment facility. A registered professional engineer shall certify the plan specifications and the construction of the facility. Five, the proposed barn shall have an engineer-certified drawings that shall be submitted for review by the building inspector prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number six, a building permit is required for all structures prior to construction. And number seven, that the planning and zoning department reserves the right to enter and inspect the CAFO at any time after proper notice to the owner to ensure that the property is in full compliance to conditional use primitive conditions of approval and Minnehaw County zoning ordinance. I'll go through just a few slides here for pictures of the site. This will be approximately where the new barn is proposed. As you can see, he's using it for storage of feed and whatnot on his site. This is his existing barn. And this is the driveway area, kind of into where his new barn is going to go. As you can see, it's, right here is, is dirt driveways. This is looking to the west. The grove of trees, the nearest neighbor is behind this tree, this tree grove a little ways. This is to the south of the site. This is the petitioner's parents' place. And this is looking down the road to the south, you can see the tree line there. And this, you can get a little bit better look at the house to the west, down the driveway. As noted earlier, we at this time do not have the required waivers, so if, maybe I can get the ordinance so I can read it right out. If you are to approve the, this item, the petitioner needs to show that his management practices, new technology, and a few other things, we can get that for you here, are enough to substantiate the reduction in setbacks in order to approve this. So, if there are any questions?
Excuse me, is the petitioner here? You come forward. State your name and your address, please.
My name is Brian Alderson. My name is Brian Alderson. I reside at 26464, 461 Avenue, Hartford, South Dakota. First, I'd like to take care of a little bit of house cleaning as I start this, this presentation. I would like to apologize to my nearest neighbor. There were some quotes in an article that you guys received that was, I thought I heard if I, and apparently by their statement, I misunderstood or misrepresented those statements. And in any event, that was not intentional, that was not intentional whatsoever. And as far as the odor footprint tool is concerned, is this high enough?
Yes.
Okay. Item two, as far as the odor footprint tool is concerned, it's been noted by the attorney representing the Summers that the tool is interesting, but unless predicted results stated here are the work of a professional engineer, that would stake his reputation on, or license on the experienced outcome. I would encourage the Planning and Zoning Commission not to accept it as an estimate or be determinative or efficient. On the back, in the middle of this article that you have sitting in front of you, there's odor footprint tool, which I did to the best of my abilities. I am not an engineer. Nor do I have any, any engineers here present willing to stand behind my work. What I do have is a South Dakota State Extension Officer in which Dr. Erin Cordis reviewed my findings, as well as added her own. Obviously, this is circumstantial. It notes in here that there is no emitting factor for a deep pit cattle facility. So it was at best an estimate on her part and my part. While she did show that, while it did show that, can, she did agree that my findings were a valid substitution, it is not a true substitution. And in her estimation, as you can see by her analysis here, of my current operation to the proposed operation, the emitting factor is the same at 142 to 142. Actually, it's 125 plus 17, so in both cases, they equal 142. It is important to note in here that while this annoyance-free factor does not mean... It is important to note in here that while this annoyance-free factor does not mean odor-free, as far as their knowledge on here, the odor factor is just a determinant number between zero and five, in which case a two and below is what most people would not consider annoying, but there would potentially be odor. Three and above would be considered odor. It's also important to note here that in as far as frequencies are concerned, a ninety-seven percent frequency means the annoying odor odors should not be experienced more than twenty-two hours a month between April and October. They're basing that discovery on odor is greatest in the hottest part of the months when it's cold, it subsides. On the back, on the back is a chart. As far as University of Purdue is explains that a rural residential area such as this one with is poten- the what's the allowable exposure as far as Purdue University is ninety-four percent odor-free, which is what this is based on. But as I mentioned, this is only a tool. That is, as I'm sure in this letter from A.J. Swanson, he will also recommend it as only a tool, a piece to the puzzle. Now, since my operation began in the the construction of the proposed hoop barn that you see in front of us that is gonna be converted into feed storage, since that time, I have received two complaints, be it phone, text, or personal appearance, personal appearance. Both were personal appearances made by Mr. Mike Seif- or Mike, huh, Mike Summers, I'm sorry, wrong Mike. In two thousand twelve, some cattle I was responsible for from my pasture on the south side of the property did escape, enter the right of way, and do some damage to a tree. Shortly thereafter, Mike approached me and said, I believe you owe me a tree. I said, Mike, which one? He said, that one. I said, Mike, you're absolutely right, I do owe you a tree. Would you like me to call the tree removal place, or would you like to pick out your own? He said, I will pick out my own. I said, do not pay the bill, I will cover it. At that, at the end of that. And two, and then in two thousand fifteen, or well, short sometime after, I said, Mike, how come that tree isn't replaced? He said, well, there's only a broken branch or two, it's fine. It's not?
We need to address the, we all need to address the commission.
Okay, okay, I'm 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 sorry, apparently it's not. And as far as my second complaint was for again from Mr. Summers in which my backup alarm on my loader was causing a loud, or backup alarm on my skid loader was causing a loud annoying sound on their property. Mike approached me about this and said, and Mike approached me about this and while I was in my loader at the time and said, is there any way we can muffle this sound? Well, upon request, right then, and this is one hundred percent accurate to my knowledge, I grabbed tools with Mike present, I disconnected the alarm and said, Mike, I did not know, I am in my skid loader and I cannot hear it. And I did not know that that radiated to his property. If there's anything I can do that's that simple that I can fix, that is fine. I would gladly gladly do it. So, when I approached Ms. Summers with an earlier copy of version that you received of this document, I was creating this document as a as an explanation to my neighbors of what this proposed building was gonna be to be distributed to the twenty-one people that received the letter that live within a half mile area of my of my uh property line. Upon that, in that discussion with Ms. Summers, was my first knowledge that there was odor in their home. As I am just li- as I am in the center of the odor when I'm at my building, I do not know how far that smell radiates, much like the alarm on my loader. Now, currently, my my buildings, my operation, I don't normally smell them, I smell them a great deal when I'm in the building, when I am performing some sort of mechanical agitation, when I'm driving my skid loader through, scraping my alley, when I am cleaning out my buildings, which I have to do four times per year, when I'm stocking manure outside, when I'm hauling manure away, when I'm cleaning up my outside lots. Those mechanical application days are approximately a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty days per year at which I am at the epicenter and exposed to the release of ammonia that causes the odor from my building. As an explanation, as an explanation to what makes the odor of, what makes the odor in manure, I like the site which is in this, which is in this handout that you also have, right here. And it is from quoted from an article Liquid Manure, Ammonia Loss and Nitrogen Availability by W.E. Jokella and J.J. Mizinger, Plant and Soil Science Department, University of Vermont, Burlington, Vermont, and the USDA ARS Beltsville Agriculture Research Center, Beltsville, Beltsville, Maryland. Adopting manure management practices to conserve ammonium N can lower fertilizer costs and reduce odors and the likelihood of nutrient runoff, nutrient loss and runoff, thus providing both economic savings to the farmer and environmental benefits to the society. Management of manure N starts with knowing that the content of the manure and relative amounts of the two main forms of manure, urea and ammonia N. The stable organic N and the urea urea N fraction is quickly converted to soil in the soil to plant available ammonium NH four plus. So it's essentially the same as N nitrogen. As manure left in the soil surface dries and pH rises, that NH four plus can rapidly convert to ammonia gas NH three, which is readily lost to the atmosphere. Ammonia gas NH three is element that can be lost to the atmosphere, and when it's retained as NH four plus, it is used by plants, which is readily lost to the atmosphere if manure is mixed into the soil as ammonium N, NH four plus, it is absorbed onto the exchange complex of the soil and retained. That's important to note that nitrogen is ammonia, is common knowledge amongst the farming industry. Nitrogen is the most, I dare say, the most expensive fertilizer requirements of our plants needs. So in doing that, I believe that this pit, this building has a greater tendency to achieve ammonia nitrogen retention in relationship to odor. First to understand that, we have to understand the pit design. The pit, I'm working with the, I'm currently working with the NRCS to to the Natural Resource Conservation Service to obtain EQUIP funding. EQUIP stands for Environmental Quality Incentives Program. They issue grant dollars in order to produce, for producers like me, to build one hundred percent containment facilities, one hundred percent manure containment facilities. And to do that, we have to hire an engineer, much like the requirements for conditional per- use permits here. So, excuse me, I need to drink a water. How is the one hundred percent containment achieved in the engineer's eyes? They have to design a pit that will withstand one year worth of animal waste. By their estimations, which are in this document, that is slightly over two thousand gallons per animal unit per year. And that was done by Wink Engineering, not myself. A part of this construction process, the engineer himself, I only came up with the idea for how I wanted the building to flow. It's their responsibility to create the one hundred percent waste containment. They are responsible for determining, after taking bore samples, determining the amount of concrete that I needed, the amount of rebar that goes into this buil- this building. And of this building is designed as a ten inch solid wall with rebar, ten inch floor, twelve feet deep, three individual pits. Each pit holding a little over six hundred thousand gallons of waste. As this pit, on top of this pit, is a slotted floor design, meaning slots, slats, five and a half inches thick with rubber mats, so just over six inches in in width, have individual slots of approximately one by six inches, every four inches apart, checker in the floor. The purpose of this is to have manure drop into the floor. Above that pit is a roof to prevent any sort of environmental agitation like wind, rain, sun, from to be able to prevent this NH three, this NH four plus to dry out, become acidic, become NH three, and be allowed NH three ammonia gas and be allowed to escape into the atmosphere. Now, that's the end of my manure management. The livestock themselves deposit this manure on the slat floor, it falls down into the pit. The only thing I'm responsible for as far as obtaining proper manure management, meaning there is very little that I can mess up, other than the application. The application process itself is the only time that this pit is agitated in any way, when it's being pumped out. Now, I went and spoke with many of my neighbors and I'm sure many of them will be able to tell you that I use the expression, I've been in a lot of these buildings. I'm not sure exactly how many of these buildings, a dozen, maybe more. And I have yet to smell any of them. I've invited some friends, my wife, my father-in-law, all different occasions, they've all been through different buildings along with me and their experiences were the same as mine. But how am I able to prove that to somebody that's not willing to go to a building with me? So I would like to enter, along with in this packet that I presented to you, there's a chart. Looks like this. This is a study. This is a study which I obtained from the internet of fertilizer value of manure written by Alfred Di Costanzo and N.M. Kenny Rambo of the University of Minnesota State St. Paul, with help from the Extension Ag Services of Lakeville, Minnesota. To read about Alfredo Di Costanzo's uh credentials, he did receive a post doc, he did receive a PhD from the University of Minnesota in nineteen eighty-nine, postdoctorate work at University of Minnesota, or Missouri in nineteen ninety. Main interest is nutrient management factors affecting biologic and economic efficiency in cow calf feedlot operations, determination of nutrient requirements to enhance economic and environmental sustainable beef production. This article was written as a way to show corn producers how to best utilize manure in their, as a fertilizer savings. I'll read this quote, read this from the article. "The manure nutrient analysis as re- as is results from solid samples of six hundred and eighty-nine solid samples collected at open feedlots and manure bed packs from their confinement feedlots." Meaning, half of my cattle in this buil- half of my cattle on this property are in outside lots. Half of them are within that hoop barn that you see on there. Two hundred and twenty and, or uh, two hundred and twenty and two hundred and twenty. When they're referring to bed packs, they're referring to buildings like my hoop barn, which is bedded, and my outside lots, cattle out on dirt. Along with that, results from liquid manure samples, a hundred and eighty-six of them from feet, from under feedlot pits, slatted floors, and lagoons were collected from an independent agency testing facility, Extended Ag Services of Lakefield, Minnesota. Meaning, these samples were not under sterile university conditions. These samples were brought in by people, producers, just like me, which they collected the data from and they used it in their analysis. What this analysis shows, if you follow with me on the middle of the pit, as far as it says, well, we'll start with outdoor lots, so in outdoor lots, much of like my own, the white bar here is nitrogen. We just determined nitrogen ammonia creates odor. From outdoor lots, fifty-three percent, or fifty-three pounds of nitrogen was all that was retained from the outside, outdoor lots. The rest was either ran off as organic nitrogen, potentially damaging groundwater, river streams, whatnot, the other. The the majority of it went up into the atmosphere as ammonia NH three. And you can see on the, you can also see on the chat graph, it also goes to bed pack, eighty-six pounds. Pit, as you can see, says a hundred and twenty-nine pounds retained within this pit. Now, as a comparative sample, off to the, off to the right, you will see initials ASE, ASAE, and MWPS. Those are samp- those are in relation to, if you're not familiar with the with the initials, and I don't wanna screw this up, the American Society of Agricultural Engineering Standards. And MWPS stands for Midwest Plan Services, second edition, Iowa State University aims. What it shows as far as, what is, is, what it shows as far as in the next article, in the next page, at the top, it says, using ASAE numbers, standard engineering numbers, they determine the maximum the ma- were used to derive from simple production of urine and manure to represent the maximum manure and recovery values. Meaning, they use those numbers, the the engineers, the American Engineering Standards created those numbers as what is the maximum amount of nutrients that we can retain from an animal, per animal unit, per year. As you can see, the maximum that they can determine between the two studies, between the two engineering bodies, was a hundred and thirty-one units. Now, to put that into perspective, the total available nitrogen captured by the pit was ninety-eight percent. The total nu- the total production of nitrogen retained from the bed packs such as my hoop barn was only sixty-six percent. Meaning, the rest of that nitrogen was allowed to escape into the air as ammonia NH three. And from outsor- outdoor lots, only forty percent was able to be retained in outdoor lots. Now, it should be relatively clear that out of a hundred and, I don't wanna screw up the number, out of a hundred and eighty-six samples from producers like me, tested by the University of Minnesota, showed that they retained a hundred and twenty-nine units of nitrogen, ammonia N. That should be a clear demonstration of how this facility contains those nutrients and why, when I walk through them, I do not smell odor resonating and will not smell odor resonating from this facility. In case that wasn't clear enough, there is a separate, separate study done by the University of Purdue. The title of this one, as it was, this is not, these are not salesman articles for promoting of these types of buildings. These are literary studies for the application of manure rates, as seen here. This is also on the same page in your pamphlets. It shows beef manure from liquid pit at twenty-four units NH four plus and forty units of N. If you scroll, look up from there, it shows that those are pounds per thousand gallons. My engineering department, my engineer, Wink engineer, has determined that I have slightly over two thousand units of, or two thousand gallons of excrement per animal per year. So by doubling those numbers, we find that per animal, my building should produce a hundred and twenty-eight units of nitrogen that is retained within this pit. Now, it's not the exact one twenty-nine, but that is ninety-seven point seven percent, so forgive me if I round up.
Madam Chair. I think, you know, we need to allow time for the opponent to, to speak. And so, Brian, I guess, I, I would suggest that you, I mean, we have time to look at all of this at our, at our leisure also. But, you know, this.
Could I have a few minutes to wrap it up?
Yeah, that's what my suggestion would be.
Okay, okay, okay. Sounds good. Um, obviously, you can refer to the page as far as how application tends to happen with drag, with dragline and tanks. How this potentially, how, how this application is done. And the chart on, the chart as far as, below as far as application is concerned. You can see that knifing, which has to be done per NRCS standards and the county of Minne, or Minnehaw County standards, has to be knifed in. Liquid manure shows nitrogen loss of zero to two percent. Compared to my current broadcasting standards of solid manure, after this is also the same study by Purdue University. Within of nitrogen ammonia loss, four days after land application. Which my current standards of broadcasting solids, over the top is a fifteen to thirty percent loss. Now, to try to close this up as quickly as I can. What we'd be eliminating here, if you do not like viewing my bales on the outside of my building, they will be eliminated, they will be stored inside of my building. If you do not like seeing stockpiled manure. NRCS will not allow me to stockpile manure outside, and I'm not sure how I could in a liquid manure setting, setting anyway. If you do not want to see runoff from my outside lots, potentially polluting rivers and streams, this is a one hundred percent manure containment facility. As you can see by that chart, the other elements that are also in manure is phosphorus and potassium. Both of those compared to the outdoor lots in my current operation are both better retained within this pit. Because those buildings, because that building will now house bedding bales. And I will not be, and because of the robotics, the, the equipment that I'm sure you've probably read about, which is in this article. As its method of feeding these livestock, never have to travel outside. Meaning I will not have a cart going from pen to pen to pen to pen, driving through mud. I will not have my skid loader going out into mud to pick up bales to put in for bedding. I will not be tracking mud onto my own driveway, which means tires that would usually collect mud and distribute it onto the county road. Should be eliminated, or at least reduced. Or at least reduced. As you could see from that picture, it was dirt. My plan was, I was pushing to get into another area to where this building could have been put up last summer. It did not happen. I would like to build that driveway up, and with the ten percent remaining dirt that Winx said I would have from the excavation in this building. I was willing, that was my idea was to use that dirt to build my driveway up, to create a crown, to eliminate that dirt driveway covered with rock gravel. If there's two things that I was gonna make sure I did tonight. Is to make sure that you underst, that everybody understood what objections were too. The things I'm eliminating here are all visual impairments, odor, potential odor. More, less mud on gravel roads. If I'm allowed to dragline my, my manure in, which. Is my one, my absolute best option for distributing my manure. Because it eliminates compaction, it increases speed of application, limiting the application running time of fifteen hours. For my entire pit system. As opposed to my current distribution method, which takes me twenty to thirty days a year. I wanted to make sure that we all understood what we were objecting to. Because of that reduction in, in, in traffic as far as my current skid load, or my current load requirements. Of approximately two hundred and ninety-three loaded manure spreader tanks on the way out. Even if it was a tank method, that tank holds approximately three to four point five animal units worth of manure, depending on the size of the tank. Meaning, at worst case scenario, we will see a slight reduction in road traffic. At best case scenario, we'll see a dramatic reduction in road traffic. The other thing I'd like to say is that. I thought that I had opened up a line of communication. When I told Mike that, when I told Mike that if there was anything I could do in regards to my skid loader, that I had failed. Apparently I had failed. I thought there was an open line of communication between us. And I would like to, I'd like to make sure before I leave here, that they understand that there is an open line of communication. You have my number, you have my email, you know where I live. Please let me know if there's anything that I can do to make this better. I believe I've tried as hard as I can to reduce my impact on their lives and on my community's life. Even with an expansion. I think that's, that's about it. Um. That's about it as far as what I have for you. As far as this is concerned, that very last chart on there. That relates as far as dollars are concerned and pounds of nitrogen lost. Currently, I'm losing twenty-seven thousand pounds from my current operation to the atmosphere. This building, based on those numbers. I would be standing to lose two thousand pounds annually. And there's a significant dollar amount in the fertilizer loss that I'm currently losing of ten thousand dollars. That's reduced to a little over eight hundred, eight hundred dollars, even with doubling the number of cattle. I hope I've made a compelling argument to the new technology that's in this building. To allow construction to happen, because I really feel it's best for the environment. As a one hundred percent containment facility, not allowing those that can leach and can runoff to runoff. We'd like to see an improvement in the local environment. I cannot stop feeding cattle, it's too important to my family. I believe this is the best option I have. Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any questions for the petitioner?
I have a couple, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
So, are there other cattle operations using this, this manure system in Minnehaw County, to your knowledge?
Yes, I did try to contact.
Seeing the hog operations, I just haven't seen them doing it with cattle.
There are, there is, can I name names? Okay, I didn't want to call anybody out that didn't want to be, okay. So Vander Vleets, which are north of Colton.
Right.
Um, there's Dennis Steinke, who I called and I asked if he could be here today to share his experiences with odor. I guess that one's just.
Going on, there are a couple of intermittent waterways that cross the property there. One from the west, one from the north. They go through some grass, grassy waterways after crossing your property. So they potentially get cleaned up. But this actually will make a zero discharge from your property cur, as opposed to the current system, which might have some. Currently, you have a pad where the stuff piles up and then you mechanically remove it personally. And the new system, a gravity takes care of it, and then it's mechanically removed without as much fuss, right?
Yes, believe me, when I tell you mechanical, mechanical agitation of me removing that manure is not a pleasant experience for me. I can smell ammonia, I do not like the smell of ammonia.
I think I saw something in there about dead animals rendering. Do we have a, a plan for that? Is there a pad with a fence around it or something?
Listed in the plan, currently, I do not have a ninety-degree stub wall or anything to hide, so I stack bedding bales up and hide them. Till the rendering truck shows, but I won't have that. So it's listed in my plan that I will build a stub wall, a ninety-degree at least, to remove any visual from residents or road.
How tall of a fence?
Railroad, railroad tie height, four feet in the ground, six feet.
Sounds good. I, I know we had a hog operator who said that none of his pigs were jumping the three-foot fence. None of his deceased pigs were jumping the three-foot, so he didn't think he needed a six-foot fence. That's all the questions I have right now, Madam Chair.
Any other questions?
I have a question. So, right now, you currently have a confinement building, which is the white hoop barn that we see. That is, contains two hundred and fifty animal units.
Yes, my, my operation, I typically have four pens of steers, one hundred and ten head purse, or one hundred and ten head, per pen. Which I fit two of those pens of steers in the hoop barn and two outside.
And where's the outside feedlot? So if you. I just, I can't tell for sure and.
Currently, that outside lot resides right through here and right through here.
Okay. Within your tree shelter belt?
Within my tree shelter belt, and actually, this building is designed to go right through one of them. So the cattle would have to be removed from there before construction could start to begin. Because NRCS requires that I abandon all of my outside lots.
Think of another question, unless Becky's got another.
I'm, I'm done, thank you.
Um, truck traffic, you know, obviously, there's going to be livestock trucks and still going to be, you know, feed trucks or something. What kind of traffic do you expect to have increase as you increase the size of your herd?
Currently, with my new technology feed system, I get a load of distillers in every ten to fourteen days, those are twenty-ton loads. With the new feed system, I'll only be allowed to use dry distillers, which ha, which have ninety percent moisture as opposed, or ninety percent dry as opposed to fifty percent. And they'll be allowed to come in in twenty-five ton loads. So, half wet, half dry, means that those loads should not increase. Currently, my feed that I have on hand represents about half. So I'll be approximately forty-eight thousand bushels short of corn. Which my plan is that commodity shed of the hoop barn is to allow the piling of corn inside of that to store my corn. So most of the truck traffic should appear as normal harvest activity, if it can be purchased in the fall. There isn't a whole lot of difference between trucks driving by my gravel road to go to the ethanol plant, as opposed to driving up to my driveway and turning in to unload.
Thank you.
Brian, I have a question for you. Who maintains the roadways out there? Does it, is it township?
Yeah, Wall Lake Township.
Okay. Um, and they're well aware that you're increasing your, the KFO and everything as it is?
Well, there's at least one member here, yes.
Okay, okay. That's, I mean, that's good for them to know, I, I mean, we're, we're trying to make sure that everybody knows.
I'm not sure the extent of the knowledge through, throughout the township. Um, one question that was raised to me by neighbors when I was speaking to them about this was potential dust on roads, at least through, at least through construction. And I, I acknowledged that I'd never thought about that before, because there will be a lot of cement trucks and traffic coming in and out. So, I have to, I'm gonna have to talk with the township about applying some ammonia, or. The chloride for dust control. Um, because from what I know, they have to coordinate their grading and whatnot. I am willing to do that, as long as the Wall Lake Township is willing to work with me on that. Uh, I'm willing to pick that up.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
I'd just like to commend you for all the work that and background that you've done on this project.
Thank you, this is very important to me.
Okay, we may call you back for any comments or questions that may arise.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody from the audience care to address? Okay, each come up separately and tell us who you are and your address.
My name is Mike Summers, we live right across the road from Brian, within eight hundred feet of the proposed building. One thing I'd like you to know, we have a bicentennial homestead that we live in, within eight hundred feet of the proposed building. It isn't like we bought a eligibility and plopped the house down and then said, all you farmers stay away from us. We've been there for twenty-six years. So it isn't, it isn't like we encroached on him, he encroached on us with the buildings. The hoop barn was built in two thousand and ten. There is very substantial odor from the hoop building. The traffic and the dust is terrible, but Brian did say he would address that. With the sodium chloride. Another big concern for me is keeping the cattle in. Since Brian has built this hoop barn in two thousand and ten. Quite often, and I'm talking quite often, his cows have been in our yard, on the road, up to Highway forty-two. He has no fence in front of his place to keep his cattle in. We have no buffer zone to keep the cattle in his property if they do tend to get out. They were out as early as last fall. Trailer full of cattle were dropped off at Brian's place, and ten minutes later, they were in our yard. And that's happened, like I say, quite often. And I usually either can get ahold of Brian or his mom and dad, and they do come down and get them put back in. But when you have new cattle at a place, and you just drop them off and they get out, they have no idea where they're going. So that makes it a little tougher to, to round up cattle. As far as the parking. In, most of the time. Semis are parked out on the road. I don't believe there's ample space for, especially by doubling the amount of cattle he's gonna have. I don't believe there is enough area for the semis to park. Without parking on the road. So that's a very big concern of ours. Property devaluation is very, every house around us is within nineteen hundred and eighty feet away from this project. The only ones that aren't are the two houses owned by the Aldersons. Every other house is the nineteen hundred and eighty feet away. Which. Is, I think nineteen hundred and eighty feet is a very good distance to be away from it. Like I say, our, a big concern is the property devaluation. Of that big of a unit, within eight hundred feet of our prob, or of our dwelling. I'm not so sure Brian has respect for us. The reason I say that, when he built his hoop barn, he physically walked to our house. With his tape measure. And measured the distance to his hoop barn. He was too close at that time, so he had to take down two or three trusses. Move them further to the east. So I don't know. If it was just a mistake on his part, or he didn't care about our property. I guess that's, that's my concerns. And I think they're very important concerns.
We'll have him come up and address maybe some of those questions that you have raised. After the rest of anybody else that wants to address this first.
Madam Chair, could I ask?
Sure.
Mr. Summers, so don't you feel that this new manure management system will be less intrusive? Or do you still fear it just based on the, the numbers of animals that are going to be involved?
I believe it'll be a better unit. Being they're all in-house and the manure is being dumped into a pit. I still believe the nineteen hundred and eighty feet is very respectable distance to our house. Like I say, our house is a bicentennial homestead, it's been there for a long time.
Thank you.
I sure hope it is.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else like to address this?
I got a couple of questions I'd like to ask him first.
Sorry Doug.
You say he's had some problems with some cattle getting out. Were those animals from the barn, or were they from his outside lots?
From the barns, and people bringing cattle to the barn.
Okay. And then, hear this all the time, how it's gonna devalue your property. I want to see some proof. We can just, we can talk about devaluing, but unless we don't have the proof, I have a hard time believing it.
Okay. I guess the only thing we could do is put it up for sale and. I guess the only thing we could do is put it up for sale and, I guess, see what we get for it. That's, that would be proof, I guess.
Okay. And then, one, just my last question here. What directions are the prevailing winds here in South Dakota?
Lot of northwest, lot of southeast, south.
It's, I think it's pretty much usually north.
But, but the smells are very terrible in the summertime when it's hot and humid. You don't even have to have a wind, and the smells are terrible. But like you say, the, the winds are prevailing northwest and southeast, and south.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mike Seifer, two six four four three, four hundred and sixty-first Avenue. Mine's the dark fields right above the place there, I was within a quarter mile. Both of the, like I say, Brian, he farms my land, that's why I had to recuse myself. Mike is my plumbing consultant. Whenever I need plumbing help, that's who I go to. So like I say, both very good neighbors. I guess when I look at this thing, I think it does a couple of things. It really, I think it improves his overall situation dramatically by eliminating the outside lots. He's working with NRCS, and NRCS is very strict about when you do something, you have to, there's no more outside lots, or they are fully contained. And I think that's part, I think personally, part of the odor problem is when we've had these wet, humid summers and evenings, it's coming from the outside lots, it's a big part of it as well. And my wife is a master gardener, she spends the first four hours every day in the summer in the gardens, and she just said, "Well, I didn't think it was a problem, ever," that she's noticed, once in a while, maybe when he's hauling. The other thing is that, that doesn't really show on this, it actually moves the facility, so it's actually north of Mike's trees. If you draw a line, which would help eliminate the east wind, because right now, he almost looks right into that hoop barn, which is part of the odor concern. And of course, the manure management side of it, the injecting of manure, I told Brian if he should get this approved, I'd like my land included in his nutrient management plan. I'd far rather have manure on my land than commercial fertilizer. And the other thing, you know, being on the Minnehaw County Planning Commission for a number of years, one of our biggest concerns is how do you allow an existing producer to grow? And when this was first, I was on the board back when this was first put together, and that was one of our biggest concerns, and, and it still is. Because unfortunately, in this day and age, people have to grow, you can't put in a confinement barn for four hundred head or five hundred head, it's gotta be closer to a thousand head. And just last thing I'll say is, I was actually at an open house, a friend of mine has one of these units out by Ethan, and at the open house, there were five hundred head of cattle in the building, and the first pen was empty, and they had picnic tables set up, and the people were eating over the pits. So granted, it was a farm crowd, so things don't bother them quite as much, but, but it is, it does help, and I think containing the, the manure makes a big difference on these facilities. Thanks.
Madam Chair, I have a question for...
Yes. Mike, you wanna come back?
So, you know, living in that area over the years, there's been an issue with runoff going into Wall Lake, right?
That's why this helps fix some of that.
That's what I was gonna ask you, thank you.
As well, yeah. The other issue we had this summer was, we had excessive number of grain trucks because the Hartford overpass being closed, and four hundred and sixty-first is the first overpass across the interstate, and four hundred and sixty-first street is actually the Chancellor Road. When you get to the county line, you take a jog and you're on the, so we had way too many grain trucks on our road this summer, stirring up dust.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this? Please state your name and your address.
My name is Les Soree. I live at four six two six four, two sixty-sixth Street. We're on the south side of Wall Lake. So, I have no problems with the wanting to expand, I understand that, and wanting to grow. I do have some concerns though, partly with the analysis that was done, that was presented. It talked a lot about there being only low density and predominantly agriculture in the area. Wall Lake is approximately a mile to a mile and a half away from this operation, and there was no mention of that within the analysis whatsoever. It also stated that predominantly, the drainage flows to the south. When you look at the maps and stuff, that stream that runs through there runs directly into one of the settling ponds that is for Wall Lake. So, I do have some concerns over, again, not really addressing that as far as, part of the analysis. Now, I feel a little bit better after listening to this, that it is supposed to be zero discharge, which will help, but again, I still have some issues in, in understanding how that will be affecting things, especially Wall Lake, considering we already have a bit of an algae problem there. Is this going to exacerbate that problem? So, the other things that I kinda wanna mention is, that concerns me is, he's essentially doubling his, size of his lot and the number of cattle that he's, will be running there. Interestingly enough, he chose a number that was just slightly below the EPA threshold for a large CAFO. I'm assuming he did that for a reason, so he did not have the reporting requirements to the EPA to do that. Now, again, I'm all for expanding and wanting to do, do things, but at the very least, I would look to this organization to maybe say, "I know it doesn't meet the intent of the EPA, but maybe we need to send it and, and request, the commission to request a state permit to make sure that the monitoring is in place and the controls are in place so that it does not become a problem." So, and I also find it somewhat ironic that as an individual, he also mentioned a lot about the loss of the nitrogen and the amount of money it's, it's costing him, and how this new system will be much improved retaining some of that stuff. I find it ironic that he's not doing anything with his current operations to improve those things and, and improve the, the quality of the water runoff from his existing lot into the stream, so. And the last thing I wanna close with is, many organizations are currently spending millions of dollars for the Big Sioux River cleanup, partly because of the large, or partly due to the animal runoff that's going into that stream and the e. coli that's in there. I wanna make sure that we don't have those same issues and problems with the existing Wall Lake district.
Madam Chair, Les, I really appreciate your comments, but you know, a lot of that animal stuff that's in the river comes from those very scenic touristy-looking cattle standing in the river. And when you drive around in rural Minnehaw County, so often you see cattle standing right in the watershed, and I think that having a confined facility with zero runoff to be pretty important on trying to restrain that. And obviously, it'll be a long time before Wall Lake is pristine, but I think this is a step, I think.
Yep. And I would agree with that, and again, the biggest concern I do have is, again, being slightly below that EPA threshold, I'm sure for a reason, but what will the commission do to ensure that the monitoring is in place and that it is controlled? Any other questions? Thank you.
My name is Joel Orkamp. I live at four six four two one, four hundred and sixty-fourth Avenue in Hartford. Hi, I grew up with Brian Alderson. Known him since we were in the third grade. I'm the one that comes over and helps him clean out his barns, I'm the one that comes over and helps him work his cattle, I'm the one that comes over and helps him haul away his manure. Been in his building a lot, probably second to only him. It smells inside there, it does. It's been a concern of Brian's for years. Over the last two years that he's been working on this project, we've discussed it, his project over and over, we've run the numbers. I'm pretty sure most of his concerns to why he's sticking to a nine-hundred-and-fifty-head building is financing. I have no doubt he'd like to go bigger. But under the current situation he's in, this is the best opportunity for him to grow for himself and his family. These buildings, I went on many tours with him of these pit barns. I'd like to put one up myself, and I can't do it, I can't, I don't have the finances. They're phenomenal for agriculture, they're phenomenal for the environment, there's a reason the government gives money out for these buildings, and I think Brian's got his foot in the right direction. He's doing this for a reason, and it's for good reasons. I know him personally, and he takes everything into consideration, so, thank you.
My name is Adrian Starhug. I live at eight thirty-two South Menlo. I've got some concerns, I guess, probably with the expansion of the city moving westward between here and Wall Lake. I figure, feel that's gonna be a big impact on this summer point down line, some worlds are gonna clash, and I guess I respectfully disagree with you there. I think I would really look pretty hard if I was gonna buy a piece of property next to that. And I do agree, I think that's gonna hurt some of the values, and I think probably as far as, we've obviously got problems with some of the neighbors already with worlds clashing with this thing, and they're only gonna get worse. And I went through a deal, I don't know, twenty years ago, in Clark County by Viana, and it was the Mayfield Colony built a hog confinement. And a lot of these same things were in that there, and they, but trying to enforce them is another different thing. But the truck traffic, the washboard roads, the jake breaks on them trucks all night long, and it was just, it was just a nightmare. And, and that, these codes and enforcement, they're, it never got them off the ground. It seemed like everybody fell on a death air, nobody wanted to do anything about it. And it was just, and part of that is our community. But these, the zoning stuff, they're for a reason, and I think they should stay the way they are. And I'm, I'm against this all the way, I think that this, you know, I think this thing ought to be kept the way it is, the zoning, that's all I gotta say about it, thanks.
I got one question to ask you. Are you happy with the way his open lots might drain and contain night water?
No, it was just a nightmare there, like in Clark County. The water drain off was an issue, the flies was an issue, and they run out of ground there because they'd done with the hose where they kept moving it from section, and they were three miles away when they were moving that section, and they kept running out of ground. And trying to stay ahead of that all the time, and the EPA thing, it just never ended.
I meant his dry lots, the cattle that are outside, I mean...
Now, this was a hog confinement.
Right, right. But you're concerned about how it's not good?
No, I don't think, you know, I mean, and a hundred percent, I think is a pretty harsh number, you know, he used a number of a hundred percent, you know, and I, a hundred percent odor, that's the point, that's, if you've been around any kind of animal at all, I mean, how do you contain it to get it to a hundred percent? I just, that's tough to me to believe, but, but the runoff, I think the road ditches there in Clark County, even the road ditches, you could see that there was stuff that's coming off them, but they were supposed to be contained, and also had rubber berms trying to hold that too, but I'm just against it, I just want that to be known. And I think if there's already problems with the neighbors now, they're just gonna get a whole lot worse, and I think that's just, but I do agree with the value of the properties. It's only gonna deplete them. I don't see any, you know, good coming out of it. Anyone else?
Thank you. Anyone else want to address this?
My name is Kim Summers. I live at twenty-six four seventy-five, four hundred and sixty-first Avenue, which is right across from Brian. Oh, I'm sorry, it's terrible being short.
That's right, I thought it helped.
Thank you. My, I have several concerns. I guess a question I have is, if something happens to this building, say a tornado goes through, a heavy snow load, anything, and it collapses, what will he do with those cattle? Will he be able to then contain them outside? That's, that's a question I have. I don't know who can answer this for me, because if he does, then that is, we already have an issue with the odor. That is just going to double it because the cattle will be double. Another concern in the report, in the staff report, it says that they have a catastrophic plan for the dead animals. The catastrophic plan is to do a mass burial on the land. That doesn't seem right to me, and I can't believe the EPA would ever allow that. You would have runoff, and I do believe that was their concern, is that the dead animals would contaminate the groundwater. I have so many concerns, I'm not quite sure even where. My other concern is, there doesn't seem to be a definite setback for our home. What is the setback for our home? Everybody else is one thousand nine, at least one thousand nine hundred and eighty feet away from this proposed building, but our home is eighty, eight hundred feet away. That, that just seems horrible to me. The quality of air is a concern. I'm assuming this pit is being vented, the, the air is going to rise, and again, we're eight hundred feet away from this. Is this air quality gonna be good enough for us to breathe and not have health issues? That's a very legitimate concern. I guess, I think that is pretty much all I have. Thank you.
Any questions for her? We'll have the petitioner come back, if he would, at the end. We have one more, I think, in the back there that wants to be, and then I'm gonna close the floor and have you probably come back up and comment or answer any questions that they may have brought up.
My name's Colin DeVries. I live on the west side of Wall Lake. Mainly the reason why I'm here is just where the concerns of the inlet river to Wall Lake is where I live. And throughout the years, we've seen it go to the positive, where they're cleaning everything up, everything from the last ten, fifteen years. My folks lived out there, I bought the place from my mom. My concern is, is according to this picture, there's a lot of land that's right in junction with Wall Lake, which isn't on that picture. The, I know that he's under the thousand head of cattle, but I think the DNR should be involved somehow, in some way. If somebody already mentioned that, I'm sorry, I'm hearing impaired, so I didn't hear it. But I think there should be a study before all this goes through. I'm not against it, I just don't want my backyard to be polluted anymore than what it already is, and we can continue to try to clean it, but you can't stop runoff of any of the cattle. Mother Nature does what Mother Nature does, just like in December when we had all that rain, all that runoff just went right into the Wall Lake. Okay? So the back of my area is brown right now, where it should be clear and crystal clear water, so that's my concern.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, so Colin, you heard the, the idea of having the, the manure fall into the basement, so there should be no runoff, you know...
Shouldn't be no runoff.
How would it runoff? How would it runoff?
Can't guarantee no runoff, that's why I would like to study, just to see what happens if there was a little bit of runoff.
If Wall Lake rose to the level where it swamped that building, it would, it would runoff?
Yep, it would runoff and go downstream and eventually make it to Lake Elman, where they had problems there.
Right, but it won't runoff unless, I mean...
Because land is right to the bird, I call it bird watching pond.
Sure.
That runs off into Wall Lake at all times when the level, and when you got that rain in December, all that water that came down...
It'll run off the roof, but not off the basement.
I'm not concerned about the basement, I'm talking the river in the back of my yard.
Right, and I'm just saying that...
That inlet's into Wall Lake.
I'm just saying that this stuff is going to be in the basement, and it's not going to runoff. They're going to pump it out, but it's, it's going to be less coming down your way than, than the current system. Doesn't that assage your fears somewhat?
Yeah, but all these lands, ain't he pumping it in there?
You know, I think there's some truth to what you say there, but that's along with everything else that gets put in there, phosphorus, et cetera. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jack Peterson, two six five five six North Shore Place. I live at Wall Lake also, and I've heard the study, I've seen these systems with hog confinements, they are very good. Wall Lake, we, twenty years ago, put a sewer system in Wall Lake to try to clean it up, dredged it, I've done a lot. I would just, I think it's a great system, and it probably will be better than what is running off, straight to the north of me, I've got two hundred and fifty head of cattle straight north of me, less than a half a mile, that that water runs right into our lake, and we can't do anything about that. I would just like to know that in the case of, you know, you've heard our thousand-year rains, our hundred-year rains, our three hundred-year rains that happen here, that there is a possibility of a contingency plan, some, some diking or something like that, in the event that there is a failure, that can maybe hold that, or kinda have an area of wetlands to absorb that. And I think if there was something like that, the DNR... And I think if there was something like that, the DNR would be involved with that. Uh, they know a lot more about it than I do. But, uh, if there was something in place like that to ensure or help, because there are no guarantees. Anything could happen. I get it. But, uh, to try to keep our lake clean and that water runs out of Wall Lake into Skunk Creek and into Sioux Falls also. So if it's, it keeps coming, you know, it's not just our problem, it's everybody's problem. But I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
My name's Matt Ulrich. Uh, I live at two-six-five-four-zero-four-hundred-sixty-first Avenue. We're about a half a mile south of the proposed site. Um, I am not, I'll first to say, I'm not a farmer, um, and not really a, really well-versed in agriculture myself. I'm in the medical field. Um, I, still our family, or our, our family and the people that lived on this, on the street that we live in, um, have all these concerns of, of odor, flies, uh, just the, uh, about, the lowering of our, the value of our land and, and such, property values and such. Um, and I appreciate, uh, Mr. Alderson's efforts in, in creating and analysis to, to try and address all those concerns. Um, again, being in the medical field, I've been around many, many, throughout my life, research studies, done a lot of research myself. Um, anyone who, and I'm sure all of us know, and it's, it's very obvious, anytime a research study is presented or any kind of analysis, scientific analysis is done, um, at the beginning of any, any of those presentations, the first thing anyone ever asks is for you to give any, uh, to, to your disclosures of conflicts of interest. So for me, even though I have all these concerns and Mr. Alderson presents pretty persuasive arguments about how to address those, to me, there's just a glaring conflict of interest in what he presents because obviously he has a very vested interest in presenting the, the rosy scenario of how these are all, all going to be addressed. So to me, this really doesn't give me any assurance because obviously he's going to cherry pick all the studies and things that are going to support his proposal. And in the absence of any kind of independent analysis where this, of someone or some, some group that doesn't have a conflict of interest, it doesn't really give me a lot of reassurance, uh, because, because of the inherent conflict of interest that, that lies there. And so, um, that's just my biggest concern. I mean, everything looks good. It sounds great. But it, it obviously, it's just hard to, to trust something that comes from someone who's obviously has an inherent bias in presenting the, that information. So I think the, relying upon his report, uh, to, to try and address these concerns for us, to me, is at best ignorant and if not, just unwise. And so that's my biggest concern about these things. And I obviously still am very concerned about all the things that we've addressed, but thank you.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Sure. Would you come back, please? Sorry.
I don't know if you had a chance to read through what, uh, what he had in here, the applicant, but he did cite a lot of different studies that were independent. It wasn't him just making the stuff up.
Right, but I, again, I'm not a, I didn't go through and obviously in, in research, you can find a lot of things that support your own intent as well. Do I know, is there other studies out there that may go against what he said and he just isn't presenting those? I don't know. And do you know that? I don't, I don't know. I'm not an expert in this field. And so it's easy to cherry pick studies that support your, your conclusion that you're trying to, to, to provide. And so I, I mean, how do we know that? How do we know that there aren't any studies out there?
I just wanted to make the point that there were a lot of cited sources there. It wasn't just...
Right, but I mean, again, in my, in my field of study, it's very easy to, to find studies that support your opinion. Um, but if someone else has a different opinion, they're going to come up and they're going to find studies that support their opinion too. And so obviously he's not going to present something that's going to go against his opinion. So that's, I mean, that's obvious. So, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close the floor for the opposition here. Brian, would you care to come back and comment or maybe address some of the questions that may have come up? Let's not draw it out too much longer.
I'm trying to keep it short. A lot of interesting points. A, a lot of them, I feel, I've more than adequately addressed. As to Ms. Kim Summers', uh, point asking about this pit, will it be vented or not? No, it will not be vented. The difference between this building and vented hog confinement buildings is that the animals in hog confinement buildings need to be kept at a consistent temperature, relative consistent temperature. So when they raise and lower the curtains and turn on the heat and whatnot, uh, because that, the gas buildup in those situations is required to be vented. It needs to be vented. This building does not. It'll be open to the south. It'll have a curtain on the north. In addressing to, uh, in addressing to property values, uh, and the compelling arguments that I made, the only arguments that I found that would stand up against my arguments that I found were animal rights activist groups and whatnot, um, that propose threats for their own agenda. Most of these studies, if you know from what my cited sources are, they, they are not for the promotion of these buildings. They were built and designed as promotion for uses of manure in livestock. To these people, to these people, the bed pack barns, a sixty-six percent retainment of, of nitrogen was good for corn production. I am challenging that to try to achieve a ninety-eight percent. I did not state that a hundred percent odor retention was possible. Based on these studies, it, it, based on the studies that I presented today, it shows the possibility of a ninety-eight percent, meaning there will still be some odor. More than likely, there will be a little odor, or there will, undeniably, there'll be odor when I pump out my pits and distribute. As far as the nutrient, I had a lot on this, but I got cut off the time, so, which is my fault. Nutrient analysis, I am governed in this event because the NRCS is offering me money to help a producer like me put up this building. The National Natural Resource Conservation Service is offering money to put this building up, to contain those nutrients. And part of that agreement is I have to send in manure samples from the pits in my building, send in soil samples from the fields in which I am trying to apply. By their rules, I have to inject that, that manure into the ground, never on or before predicted substantial rainfall while the ground is not frozen and with no snow cover. When I turn in this information, I will give them the approximate days in which I mean to distribute. And they will inform me if, when, and how much I can distribute on these fields per the field's nutrient management plan. Meaning I cannot overapply nutrients. I have to inject them. I cannot have a buildup of nutrients. That is my legislative body and by issuing, by them issuing me this grant money, they can easily take it away if I do not comply or shut down my operation. In either event, that is my governing body as long as well as reporting my nutrient management plans to the county itself, which is in the conditional use permit application handout. As far as property devaluation, I am unaware how reducing my odor, putting this building behind, behind my current standing structures, away, farther away from houses. This building will be able to be seen from two houses, potentially more up the hill. I have not driven to the top of the hill at Wall Lake. Could potentially be seen by very few houses, all distances greater than two thousand feet away. And it can be seen off the highway from the hill as you look in that farmyard up there, off the highway. It'll be able to be seen from there and that'll be able to see approximately, because of the hoop barn and my current feed storages, uh, a hundred and fifty feet, um, give or take thirty-five percent of the building. So, uh, I haven't measured from where I expect it to be.
We have a question here at the table. Becky?
These are non-related to the discussion related to discharge or anything. It's just specific questions that a couple of folks had. What is your cycle for buying, selling cattle related to semis, the issue that they're talking about with semis on the road? Do you empty fill once a year? Um, is that your plan with the nine-hundred-and-fifty animal units?
Uh, no, this building is designed to be nine-hundred head. It was at the request of, uh, the planning and zoning office. I exceed that a little bit to nine-hundred-and-fifty, just in case for accidental overflow, dropping off one semi and picking up another. Um, in, in that instance, somebody show up to count.
Hey, that's not my question. I'm sorry. Let me clarify. My question is, do you primarily have truck traffic, truck twice a year, like in the spring when you sell cattle and in the fall when you fill the, fill the building? Or do you have a rotation cycle that you will fill one pen at a time?
I have a rotation... I, I have a rotation cycle. Um, these are six individual one-hundred-and-fifty head pens.
Okay.
And that is every two months, which corresponds with the Chicago Board of Trade as their marketing contract limitations. One-hundred-and-fifty head represents five contracts on the board, four semis on the way out and two semis on the way in.
Okay.
So every two months, you should expect six semis.
Okay.
Total.
That's my only question.
Okay.
You gave an answer that answered the rest of them, so thank you.
To, to that point, as far as the driveway distances and whatnot, traditionally I load two semis out, give the smaller steers a chance to catch up for a couple of weeks and then unload another two semis. Currently, I'd, I'd load them out about every two weeks. There are times when two semis or potentially three semis can show up, maybe in this instance, four, on the way out. But because I'm adding to that driveway an extra two-hundred feet, I believe those trucks will have ample space to drive in, turn around and back, back up to the loading and unloading area.
Madam Chair?
Any further questions?
Brian, uh, the issue of parking on the road, um, would it be possible to set up your driveways so that they could pull completely off of the road in order to load and unload?
Yes, that's what I was trying to address. I'm essentially adding two-hundred feet more of driveway to get to this.
Okay.
Or from, it's not about two-hundred feet, but at least two-hundred feet to where they have to back up to, creating more space.
Okay.
Um, part of the issue with backing up and unloading on the road, there's, it's a, it was a seasonal weather issue. As you can see, my building comes straight out of my driveway. And my driveway is only so wide in its current state. So in the spring and in the winter and whatnot, when we have a thaw, trucks cannot properly turn around because of that extra grease on the top, meaning only one truck at that time can get in and out because they essentially have to back up, pull all the way down to the road and back, back out. Uh, in dry weather, they don't have to. This potential building, they should all be able to turn in to the hoop barn with one truck being backed up to the barn, two-hundred feet to the north.
Madam Chair, I did miss one question. I'm sorry. So on the west, you men, mentioned, or in your report, you mentioned something about trees? And there are some trees to the west and you indicated you will plant more. I can't tell that that's part of the site plan?
Uh, yes, um, as far as the map is concerned, straight on the west side, there are three rows of trees. One kind of a shrub, one a taller variety and one row of evergreens. There are currently thirteen trees on my property, evergreen trees, that will be used to...
Okay, thank you.
Make additional rows and another row.
Okay, thank you for your clarification.
Yep.
Thank you.
Can I present with one fact? That's all, just the fact of what you did.
I would suggest that you come to the podium. Um, Brian, have you addressed, do you think, all the answers to the questions that were raised?
Summers has a question for me.
Okay, I'll let her come back to the podium.
Yeah, everything needs to be at the podium.
Yeah, so that we can see what's happening. I'll let you two more address this and then if you need to make comment and then I'm going to close the floor.
I'm Ryan Weeman, Lincoln County resident. I don't have a, I'm not an advocate here today for the petitioner or the opponents. I just want to state a fact as I'm listening here. I spent ten years on the Turner County Planning and Zoning. Um, sat in your seat many times over these things and I did notice a few facts that weren't spoke that I do believe are true here today. If Brian's going to be receiving, uh, equip money, he's going to have to abandon his current pens and his barn. I don't think that was clearly addressed. He'll be able to have his barn for feed services, that sort of thing, but he's not going to be permitted to be able to feed out of that without coming back to you to increase his permit and go forward with a change in use. So he's not, when they asked if those, what's going to happen if we have an act of God, those cows are going to have to be moved out of there because he's not going to be able to set them up, be able to, you're not going to be able to put a thousand head up in a day with a couple portable panels and keep in nine-hundred-thousand-pound steers or whatever they are. Let's give it, give it what it is. Um, the other thing I wanted also mentioned here for everybody that's here with this petition is, is that I do understand that it is scary with a deep pit barn with this new, we're increasing animals and we look at that number getting bigger. But this equip money has had a lot of research and a lot of time spent into it. And you're not going to do this on economics alone of just building this barn. By taking out his existing structure and doing this, I believe personally, this is good for all the neighbors involved. I've spent my life researching this stuff and understanding this stuff and this is the future of agriculture. Without a barn like this, if we could have more of this, agriculture wouldn't have the black eye that it sometimes has that we do see here today that we're scared of. And I feel with the runoff and the issues that you have, I've sat with many engineers that have engineered these barns. You cannot take in rain unless it comes in sideways into the barn. You have a full roof on this barn. So it's not going to overflow unless he does not abide by his management plan on the manure. And he runs it over a year, which they always have capacity for a little bit more. It would take a management issue more than an act of God or something, even if it comes, when we see a tornado come, it doesn't take the basement. Takes the barn. You know what's in the basement. The manure is in the basement. I think it's going to be a safe thing that, I think if we had that happen, it is much safer with this type of operation. The last thing I want to mention is, is that if you do not approve this today, which is your leisure, this board, he is still permitted to, uh, to be a producer at four-hundred-and-forty head or whatever he's doing right now, currently the way he's doing it. And I don't feel that's advantageous for the neighbors and the people around them also because that has more risks and potential to them in the future than this barn does. And I guess I would applaud somebody that's doing the homework and the research to try to be a better citizen, a better steward and a better neighbor. And I think this barn in time would prove that. Thank you.
Yes, you can do, you're the last one. I said I'm going to close the floor after your comment, unless anybody else.
Sean Tezen, forty-six, one-one-five, two-hundred-and-sixty-fifth Street. I am right across the highway. We're going to address the smell. It is what it is. I'm more worried about property value. You can say it won't go down. As I stare across the way, I'm going to see a feed lot. It is what it is. It's a feed lot. Now, are these cattle his personal cattle or are they cattle that he's just feeding for somebody to make a profit? He acts like it's his cattle, his cattle, his cattle. Is he purchasing all of these cattle himself? I don't think so. I'm worried about the property value. I've got five, six people behind me that all live behind me within a half mile that stare down, that's his very unattractive property. That's all I have to say.
Any questions? Okay. Brian, you have any other comments?
Get to the mic.
Yes, to answer the question, yes, I currently do own one-hundred percent of the cattle on my property, um, as far as my feedlot steers is concerned. Uh, that is my full intention to do so in the future. I found a natural niche in the cattle market in terms of my marketing to allow me to do so. So I've been able to maintain profitability even in depressed cattle market times. In terms of, in terms of this property itself, kind of as a closing argument, Mike mentioned bicentennial and yes, we did move, his home is bicentennial home, which he has lived at for twenty-six years. The current farmyard that I am operating has been in my family as a homestead since eighteen-seventy-six. I am a fourth-generation farmer, living and operating. And to my knowledge, there has always been a livestock operation run by an Alderson consecutively since eighteen-seventy-six. While it is true, we did move away for one calendar year from the, from our former acreage in nineteen-ninety-seven. We moved back in nineteen-ninety-eight. And the reason why I am up here for a conditional use permit plan is because I was excluded from my ability to grow organically from producers that, from ordinances that were put in place to protect producers like me in two thousand and two. Being able to grow organically, never by over five-hundred head, not exceeding nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine animal units. As long as you have an engineered plan and manure management plan to coincide with your growth. I missed that. The deadline was May twenty-sixth, nineteen-ninety-eight. I missed that because our house and our outside yards were constructed in August of nineteen-ninety-eight. And that is the one, ninety-seven was the one calendar year, which I was not included, which we were not living, physically living, but we still ran cattle on the property.
Any questions for him?
No.
I'm gonna close discussion in the floor. Any comments from the petitioners?
Madam Chair, I move for purposes of discussion, so there's a motion on the table, I move acceptance and approval of this conditional use permit.
Okay, motion's made, seconded, to approve.
These are, these are my comments, and I address them to the board and to the audience, and, and I, even though I move this for purposes of discussion, this, I agree, is, is a good approach, and I commend you once again, Brian. The primary things I heard were concern about the environment and air quality, and everything that he is doing, I believe, will enhance Wall Lake, will maintain odor and better control odor. It will prevent runoff and pollution. One of the last times I was at Brant Lake, we were having a nice time swimming, and we looked at the other end of the lake, and there are cattle swimming in the other end of the lake. Now, that's, it was a hot day, that's sure not very good for wall aqua, water quality. And this helps to protect Wall Lake, because that, that manure is not going anywhere. The D E N R and the N R C S have been heavily involved in this project in order to obtain equip money. There are lots of regulations. He has already gone through a lot of regulations to be able to qualify for this funding. Even though, yes, he is applying it, it doesn't actually increase the amount of nitrogen applied. If farmers apply nitrogen, if they don't apply it as manure, they, they buy commercial nitrogen to apply. So as far as, he will have to maintain those standards established in his manure management plan in order for his application. It is easier to control flies in a confined area than it is on an open feedlot. That will, yes, there'll be flies, there ever, there always are flies, wherever they're cattle, any kind of livestock. But it's easier to control those in a confined area. And as far as the research, most of the reputable research does come out of ag research areas like Iowa State, University of Minnesota, SDSU, and Purdue. So from, I appreciate the point about what he has brought forward. I'm familiar with the research that he has brought forward as, as serving on the board and seeing this information before, and I am confident that he has presented us with valuable research. And so because of this information, because I believe the, the design of his CAFO will actually decrease the amount of odor, I am going to vote for approval of this, of this plan. I'm done.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair. You know, I've been doing this job for a few years, and it doesn't matter what the project is, somebody's going to be against it. And, you know, Brian could be putting up a hair salon, and people would be upset about the traffic and the change in the community. This property is, is zoned ag. It's not zoned residential, it's not zoned museum. Agriculture is an industry. A hundred and fifty years ago, people were getting shot stringing barbed wire because it was a new technology. Anything that's new can be scary. And, I mean, there are people today that despite studies are afraid of vaccines, are afraid of all kinds of things which have been shown not to be the case. This is zoned ag, it's, it's a proper ag operation, and I actually wish that some of our other cattle operations would convert to this kind of a thing, because there are some really sloppy operations out there that are directly injecting manure into persistent streams, and not just intermittent streams, and I wish that we could get those converted over. So I, I recognize this is going to likely be appealed, and I'll be listening to all of this again, but I would hope that each of us would study up on these things and maybe apply to be on this board and, and listen to this kind of thing over and over and over. People are over and over and over afraid of their evaluations, and yet, there was probably an opportunity to buy all this land at some previous time, and it's zoned ag.
I would like to make a comment. As noted before, as part of the conditional use permit, we do not have the necessary waivers. And I'll read it right out of the ordinance of what is required if you are to approve this. "In the absence of a waiver, documentation shall be presented on new technology, management practices, topographic features, soil conditions, or other factors which substantiate reduction in minimum separation criteria."
Thank you, Kevin, and I believe that we've demonstrated that with the idea of containing the manure. And I think that compared to the current operation, this will be a great improvement. And, you know, obviously, if we had a fifty-five inch rain over a six-hour period, there could be a problem, but I suspect things would be vastly diluted at that point.
Well, I, I think, just for clarification, because this is probably gonna get appealed, potentially to go to court, I would like to see it in the motion that, that it's your findings, that the containment system represents the technology needed.
Commissioner Randall, do you want to revise your motion, or shall we withdraw it and restate it?
I think it should probably be withdrawn and restated, but I have a comment to make, too. I've lived out east of, east of town on an acreage, and knew when I built my house out there, that I was in the ag community. I have farmers all around me. Sure, I've had some odor, I've had cattle in my yard from some leased property that was right next door to me, but we've always tried to compromise. And I always knew that it was an ag community, and I've been out there over thirty years. I believe that we all need to remember that we should all be good stewards and good neighbors. It goes with the territory, folks. You know, you live where you live, and if you don't like where it is, then I guess it's time to move. That's the only comment I have. I do think that the motion needs to be changed, though.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, do you want to state a new one, Becky?
Okay, let's try that again. I move for approval of the condition, conditional use permit, and then the rationale, due to the fact that the confinement building will contain more manure, thus containing more nitrogen than the existing situation, and will adequately compensate for the lack of setback.
Talking that, if that's, that covers it for Scott.
Okay, I will take a vote on that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, motion passes.
Next. Gravel pit or the water tower next?
Okay, we have at least three items to get through. If you're gonna leave, please leave quietly. We have to get, like I say, we'll be here at least another hour yet, so.
Maybe a dog cattle.
Yeah. Okay, we'll be doing item number five, which was put back on the regular agenda. Kevin, is that yours?
Yep. Right, conditional use permit, item five is conditional use permit number seventeen zero-three, to exceed twelve hundred square feet of total accessory building, requesting four thousand one hundred and sixty square feet on property legally described as Lot One, Track Two, Hammer subdivision, in the northeast quarter, Section Two, one oh one, of fifty-two. The property is located four and a half miles southwest of Hartford, and is at a short distance away from Grass Lake, which you'll see right here. It is located in a subdivision of more than four lots. What you don't see on here, there are a handful of subdivided lots there, the, which requires the, the petitioner to get a conditional use permit. The petitioner liked to construct a forty-two by eighty-foot accessory building. This proposed three thousand eight hundred and forty square foot building would be in addition to an existing eight hundred square foot building, or the total of four thousand one hundred and sixty square feet. He has previously on his property had several other accessory buildings, of which he has torn down. Those previous accessory buildings totaled approximately three thousand square feet. As noted, this is in a subdivision, but most of the lots within the subdivision no longer have residential building eligibility's remaining on the lots, so will not become denser residential. The nearest building eligibility is about a quarter mile south. As part of the conditional use permit, there are six criteria that must be addressed. The effect upon the use and enjoyment of the property in immediate vicinity, and the use is already permitted. The construction of the proposed accessory building will have little impact on the surrounding properties, and the accessory building will have no impact on the agricultural properties in the area. Number two, the effect upon normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding vacant property for uses prevalent in the area. The uses will primarily remain ag, as noted that there are no more real eligibility's in this subdivision. The nearest house is just north along Grass Lake there. And number three, the utilities, road access, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. The petitioner will be responsible for providing those utilities, and he will use this existing driveway. Number four, that off-street parking and loading requirements are met. He will not need any additional parking as a result of this use. Number five, that measures are taken to control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, lighting, so that these will not create nuisances. No offensive, offensive nuisances shall be permitted at any time. The project will be required to have residential storage only, as with all conditional use permits for this sort of building. And that the use of lighting should be directed downward to not cross property lines. And number six, health, safety, general welfare of the public and comprehensive plan. The proposed accessory building should have little to no effect upon the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. Other large accessory buildings are located in this area, and most of them, and some of them are non-farm. I don't have that map. You have the map in your packet. Where the farm buildings are very similar size, and non-farm buildings are getting close, but not quite. So this will be a larger building, but similar to the area. Staff finds the proposed accessory building is reasonable size in the existing structures and size of the property and the location of the property. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit seventeen oh-three with the following conditions. The total accessory building square footage shall not exceed four thousand one hundred and sixty square feet, number two. A building permit is required prior to the construction of the accessory building. Number three, that an inspection be made on the proposed addition to the accessory building and to ensure that the floor area does not exceed three thousand eight hundred and forty square feet. Number four, that only personal residential storage shall be allowed in the building. No commercial uses or commercial storage will be allowed anytime. Number five, that all outdoor lighting shall be a full cutoff, fully shielded design to prevent direct spillage and light beyond the property boundary. Number six, the planning and zoning department reserves the right to enter and inspect the property accessory building at any time after proper notice of the owner to ensure the property is in full compliance with the conditional use permit conditions of approval and the Minnehaw County ordinance. There's some pictures here. There's the site plan that's been, shows the removal of a couple of buildings here, and then the addition right there. There's the nearby buildings. This property right here has over five thousand square feet of accessory building. There's a rendering of what the building is gonna look like. And there's the driveway up to the building, or the house. The building will sit on that gravel there. He had the materials delivered the day he applied for this application here. There's the existing building there. Is there any questions?
Questions, staff? If not, well, Mr. Deffenbaum, please come forward. State your name and address.
My name is Dudley Deffenbaum, my address is two-six-two-four-five, four-hundred-and-fifty-ninth street, Hartford.
Any questions or concerns based on the conditions?
No, sir.
Put forth. Didn't you just tear that barn down this summer?
I did.
That's what I was thinking, it just disappeared this summer, so. Any questions, Mr. Deffenbaum? Okay, thank you. That's, that's all we need. Okay, please come forward. Anyone else who wants to address this, state your name and address.
Donna Lupien, two-six-two-four-one-four-fifty-ninth Avenue. I'm the property just north of it, but all of my questions were already answered in the presentation. Basically, I wanted to make sure that it was used for residential use and not for commercial use.
I understand that, since Dudley's a contractor, I understand that.
I think it'll be an improvement with all the other things torn down and this one put up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry you had to sit through all this.
At some point.
And make a motion to approve.
We got a motion, a second. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. And now we're gonna talk about water towers, right? Oh, okay. Anyone who's, we're now gonna address the Brandon water tower issue. There's room in the main room, if you're in the annex.
The overflow.
The overflow. Chairs over here, all the way across, just come on in.
I'll wait for everyone to get seated, and then I'll- Okay.
After the water tower, it's a gravel pit.
Yep, and on to the next item.
Yes, we have the water tower, then the gravel pit.
Okay, this is a conditional use permit that has come before you back in June of last year. I'll give you a quick synopsis and overview for the, for the public that may not have been here the last time. This is the city of Brandon requesting a conditional use permit for a water tower facility, basically at the corner of Redwood Boulevard and Chestnut Avenue. It does not, this is the entire property, but they're only buying a small parcel of property right in here, about an acre and a half, I believe. At the June meeting, there were, there was a lot of discussion about the, the location of this water tower and whether it would be appropriate at some other place, some other placement of this water tower. At that time, you continued it in order to allow the city of Brandon to meet with the adjacent property owners, to provide them some additional information, to also research whether there were alternative locations where a water tower could be built. In your packet of information, you have some additional information that the city of Brandon and, and their engineering company provided, showing the distances to some of their surrounding properties. They provided a nice depiction of what the water tower would, would look like, and some engineering on it. And then finally, they provided a set of meeting minutes where they went out and met with the neighbors, and what they discussed at, at that meeting. Staff still is recommending approval, just like we did back in June with the three conditions. I will read, read those conditions for anyone that wasn't here. Number one, the first condition, that a minimum of two off-street parking spaces be provided, and that each parking space shall not be less than a hundred and sixty-two square feet, or nine feet by eighteen feet, and shall be maintained in such a manner that no dust will result from the continuous use. Number two, that all existing drainage is maintained, and that erosion control measures are implemented on all disturbed areas, so as not to allow any sedimentation of existing drainage ways or bodies of water. And number three, that the applicant obtains a building permit prior to any construction commencing on the site. So, right now, it's an empty field. I could show you the pictures, but I'd be glad-
Does the building permit cost for a water tower?
Be one percent of the value.
All right.
So it's gonna be a pricey endeavor. This basically, and-
Wonder maybe since it was a city, they had a different deal or something.
No, they have to pay like everyone else.
That's good. Having just paid, that's good. Having just paid, that's good. Okay.
Oh, this is what the site looks like back in June.
Okay, still looks that way?
It's a little more white today, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Okay.
And I know there's a lot of people here.
Scott, before we call Brandon up? Okay, the petitioner, please come forward, state your name and address.
Brian Reed with the city of Brandon, three oh four Main Avenue South in Brandon. John Brown with Stockwell Engineers is handing out a couple of exhibits. And he'll go through, he's prepared a little agenda for you. Go through that agenda.
I'm gonna get the Elmo going and then you can show that on the overhead.
Basically what they're handing out is a map of the area. Ready to proceed? Or he's gonna bring that up first? Oh, you got a new one now?
Whenever you're ready.
Go back, he'll, once he gets started, he'll, he'll get it up.
Okay, my name is John Brown. I'm with Stockwell Engineers. I'm here representing the city of Brandon. We, I wanted to run through, what I handed out to you was first of all, an exhibit that we'll touch on a little bit towards the end of this short presentation. And then also, I've, I've handed out a memo that really identifies kinda where we've been and the information that you should have in front of you. The first, first item, or the packet that was submitted to you previously was a site map of the, the site that Scott has presented to you. That also has two tower images. It also illustrates the height that we are proposing and then also it, it allows us to, I guess, confirm the height of our tower is very similar to what Sioux Falls is proposing and that was one of the things that was submitted to you folks originally. Was the height of the tower was the tallest, one of the tallest three structures in the state. This structure is a similar height of the city of Sioux Falls's water towers and similar heights to the rural water towers in the area. So the, the height is similar to those towers, so I wanted to confirm that or let you know that. The second item there is a packet of meeting notes that, that was presented to you. We reached out to the public as you had requested to identify what would be constructed in the area so that they were aware of what was going up in the neighborhood if it was approved. There was a letter sent out to the residents. Brian Reed and myself also went out and visited or tried to visit with each of the residents in the area. A couple of them, we were not able to reach once, after we had sent a letter and asked them to contact us. And you kinda see the information presented to you there. The other item, what I wanted to do is address this image that's up on the screen right now. We've, as, as a request of yours, you guys had requested that we go out and research some other alternative, alternative locations. One of those locations was requested that we look at an existing water tower site that was south of this location that's not shown on this map. I wanted to just make sure you're aware that that was not our property nor was that large enough. The, the site was less than a half an acre and we need more than an acre for what we're proposing to do. So that site that was an existing water tower that is no longer there is, was not our property and was not a feasible site for us to, to explore any further. So I wanted to make sure you're aware of that. The other three locations here, the one is the Nelson property, which the city of Brandon has a willing seller. The second site is the Ellefson property that's a little bit further away, up closer to the interstate. And the third site was a Wright property, which is east about a mile. And what we tried to do is illustrate the difference in costs of each of these sites. The Nelson property at, at that location, so if you look at the graph, or the chart on the right-hand side, the Nelson property, we've identified the land costs and then the pipe costs basically from the corner of Chestnut Boulevard and Redwood Boulevard. So what we tried to do is compare the cost from a common location for the city of Brandon. And site number one, our land costs are fifty thousand dollars. The pipe cost to get the pipe to that location's about sixty thousand, so it's about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So the next two sites are really, what we've done is taken our total cost and subtracted that hundred and ten from that and that's where you see the number in red. For example, the Ellefson site, number two site, based on a land cost of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, our cost would be an additional two hundred and ten thousand, five hundred dollars for that site. The Wright property, which is a mile farther east, obviously there's a bigger cost in pipe cost to get it to that location. Is an increase of about four hundred and ten thousand dollars from our proposed site. So with that, I guess what I would like to do is open up to any questions that you might have for us and I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions of petitioners? Okay, seeing none?
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, anyone from the audience would like to address this issue? Visited with them all, now we have someone else here. Yes, please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Martha Smith. My address is twenty-three oh three East Redwood Boulevard. The first proposal, the water tower would be about eleven hundred feet from my primary residence. I also own two other tracts of land right in that area, in that same corner on Redwood and Chestnut. And I'm concerned about it being so close to my property. I have my primary residence on seven point three acres. I've lived there and owned these properties since nineteen seventy-nine.
Are you east of them, Mrs. Smith?
South.
Straight south.
Straight south.
Straight south, okay, straight south.
Straight south of number one. I also own, that's tract six. I also own tract seven, which is just south of that, seven point three acres. And I also own tract one B, which is seven point three acres, just south of, of, well, there's another house in the corner of, of. So it's, it's twenty-one point nine acres that I owe, own, which would be affected by the, the site of that tower right, right out my front window. And I'm concerned that it would also affect the, the property value of my other vacant lots. They are, they were and still are set up for tracts. They're not, we used them as a horse pasture when we bought them, but they are still, and we've always paid taxes as residential. They're zoned for that. So I'm concerned about that. Also, when the gentleman from the city office came out to talk to me, it was a strange conversation because they asked me, well, what, where do you suggest the tower should go? And I said, well, just someplace other than where you've proposed. And I said, I would think it would be your job to find additional sites, not mine. I guess that's mostly what I, what I'm concerned about is the effect on our property, property values when I sell it. That's my retirement plan, my nursing home insurance and so forth. So I would really hate to see that be diminished. Also, I know two neighbors that were not contacted about their coming to visit. And I don't know how many neighbors they actually visited. One, two, three. So, they did visit. Okay, so they visited four. But there were several other, others within that area. And they didn't even contact some of the neighbors that were within that eleven hundred.
Your property is outside of the Brandon city limits, correct?
Yes, it is. It is. And so is, so is the top, so is the area that they've proposed. It's not in the city. And I assume, would, would the city of Brandon be liable or the county planning commission for my loss in, when I go to sell that property? Just a question.
It is just a question.
Thank you.
Anyone else would care to address this?
My name's Elizabeth Aker. I'm at two-two one-five East Redwood Boulevard. I am just to the east of Martha's property there. I'm sorry, to the west of Martha's property. I spoke last time about this. We just actually built our, I'd say, dream home on our property there. We were actually featured in the home magazine in December. And our title of our article is Handcrafted Modern Home With A View. And this water tower was never in the works. I've been talking to the city of Brandon for the last six years that I've lived there. They've, they've said they will never take our road. We will never be in the city. I do not understand why us not being in the city, they think that they can put a water tower and honestly ruin our view. We bought this land for the acreage experience, for the farm life, not to have the disruption of an ugly, giant, massive water tower in front of us. It also is gonna be lit up, obviously, because it has to for regulations. And I mean, to tell you the size of this water tower, the state capitol is a hundred and sixty-one feet. It's almost the size of the state capitol. And, and where there's no buildings remotely close to that size. Now, there are other areas that the city can put the water tower, which are very reasonable. I guess they don't wanna spend the money on it, but in addition to the two that they show there, there's also land that they own next to property number three that is, is zoned for a new elementary school. And I don't know, I think having a water tower near a school is probably the best option because you're not offending any neighbors, you're not ruining any property values. And it kind of is kind of a billboard for a school. I'm not sure why the, the town has not looked at that area. In addition to that, I know you guys are gonna ask, how do you know it affects your property values? All you have to do is Google it. You can go to Trulia and there is pages, of pages, of real estate brokers saying, building and living near a water tower of this size does affect your property value. People don't wanna buy a house near a water tower of this size. And in addition to that, there's a good blog out here, if you guys would like to read it, that is from a broker who has been a broker for thirteen years. And she talks about how it is, she would advise a buyer never to buy a property near a water tower, this close anyways. Especially for this size. It'd be like building, or buying house right next to the state capitol, which maybe is pretty, but a water tower's not that pretty. And I doubt they'll make it that pretty. So, that is, I guess, all I have to say, but, and as someone said on the last meeting, you know, you're not, you're zoned for commercial places, you're zoned for agriculture, other places. This is zoned for Brandon township, not Brandon city. If Brandon needs a water tower, then they need to put it in their Brandon city limits. Not in a township where we will never benefit from the water. And it will just cause more traffic on our road that they've already made increased terribly. I mean, our washboarding our road is terrible because of the city of Brandon and this tower's just gonna add more to it. Do you have any questions?
How do you spell your last name?
Aker, A-N-A-K-E-R.
Okay, any questions from Mrs. Aker? Not, anyone else care to address this issue, please? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Chris Constant, nine-twenty North Chestnut. I'm the house that's right next to the proposed water tower. When Brian and Scott came out to talk to me, I kinda walked them out to the backyard and said, here's my trees, they're sixty feet. Here's your tower across the road, which is just a few hundred feet from my corner of my acreage, a hundred and fifty feet. Again, I bought this house without a water tower being there. This is also our retirement down the road when we decide to sell and it will affect the values of property. Also, you can Google this, FHA loans. When there is a water tower, they call it a fall zone. There's a house by the fall zone of a water tower. FHA will not do a loan. You can only do it on a conventional loan with twenty percent down or cash. Majority of the people buy a home with an FHA loan. I'm in a fall zone if they build that tower. Hundred and fifty feet will come right across the road, right to by where my yard is. So I'm definitely opposed to that. Not opposed to growth, but opposed to this water tower.
Any questions of Mr. Constant?
Could you help describe, sorry, if I may, which house is yours exactly? Like say, from where they're proposing the number one site?
It's a, I guess.
Oh, okay. Alright, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else care to address this? Please come forward, state your name, please, and address.
My name is Sandy Ellefson and I live at eleven oh two North Chestnut. And we just live right north of Chris, the next house. Family farm, again, it, it isn't that we're opposed to growth. We understand that interstates and power lines have to be, you know, constructed for growth. My husband's family farm's been in the family for five generations, so. Our farm used to extend forty acres across the interstate. The interstate came through, farm was divided. It took four-mile jaunt to go around and farm it, so that was sold off because it was not able to be farmed. But that was, again, completed for the good of the growth, understood. Again, the power lines went through and again, they ended on the north side of this road. Or, excuse me, they were gonna be on the north side and they ended up putting them on the south side of the road, which was on the edge of our property. Again, for the good of the growth of the communities and so on. Family farm, been in the farm of the Ellefson name since eighteen seventy-eight, I believe. So it isn't that we are opposed to it or know that growth doesn't have to take place. It does. And, and we've lived through it. And if this gets placed over there, we'll live through this as well. It's just that the city of Brandon would be impacting a lot of our good neighbors, as well as our own. We did propose, talked to the neighbors and proposed an area next to the interstate by the power lines. All of their utilities could be together. Not the most conducive place. We'd rather not have it on our property or in our view, but rather on the north side where it's kind of behind everybody's view rather than in ours and all of our neighbors' front yards. All of our homes seem to just kinda go around there. That's the slope of the land goes down to the river. So, it's, it, our feeling that, you know, we would respectfully ask you to deny this conditional use for that location and ask Brandon city to continue to search for an area that would be more conducive, whether it's the Wright properties or our properties or an area that's, you know, my husband knows the, the elevations and so on. There are other areas that, could it go on them? Yes. Would it be more expensive? Yes. That's all gonna be a consideration, you know, for you and the city of Brandon to make. But, you know, we would just really ask that you consider everybody's statements that they've made here and ask you to please deny this consideration for the water tower on the Nelson plat. Thank you for your time.
Any questions for Mrs. Ellefson? Thank you very much. Anyone else care to address this issue?
David Ellefson, eleven oh two North Chestnut. As Sandy stated, we're not against growth. You have to have growth. And we have had some consensus with the neighbors that if it was to go on our property, north, as far as it goes, towards the interstate, you know, we could live with that. But it, if you ask me personally and my wife, we'd rather not even see it there. It's, it's affecting all of the neighbors. It benefits it. It does not benefit us at all or ever will. And in their proposed plans, their pipelines would go all the way east to the number three site. It's just that they have to have a more, you know, an additional outlay to begin with instead of in the future when they reach out to that mile marker to the number three spot. Do you have any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Ellefson?
I guess it's the one question I just do have, you know, I know that Stockwell probably worked with, I apologize.
Yes, go ahead.
You know, historic background on this piping cost, but just to understand that this land cost, is that something that you proposed or is that something that's Stockwell came up with on their own?
No, I proposed that to them because it, it is an effect on the property values. So, I'd rather not see it there, but they're, the costs, the costs are higher because of additional, you know, piping. But it's also a detriment to our property. And as far as property values goes, if you would divide that money out to the number of acres they want, it would be the same as a lot. it would be the same as a lot.
Okay. I wasn't questioning, I just wanted to make sure I understood where that value came from.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else care to address this, and then we'll ask Brandon to come up one more time, in case you have any questions? If you want, please come back up. Any questions for the petitioner, and we'll close the floor after that.
The Ellefson, just to answer maybe one of the questions, the Ellefson property is the number two site on your, the plan in front of you there. And that's approximately the same size as what we're looking at from the Nelson property. 1.3 to 1.2 acres.
Any other questions with Brandon?
I have one. I'm not sure exactly what it is yet. I'm thinking about it. So, is there a future school going to the further east?
It's my understanding that the Brandon Valley School District has purchased approximately 20 acres. It would be south and east of, if you look at that drainage channel, it's south of there, about a quarter of a mile, maybe.
But you don't expect the city to actually annex out to that area?
We will eventually annex out to there when the school is built. They do not have any plans at this point in time to build it, but we will annex out to that when it's constructed.
People that I know that live in Brandon say that water is very expensive.
It's not inexpensive.
It's just a $100.
I answered that before.
Sewer's a little more expensive. Water, we're reasonable on the water. It's a sewer that is a little expensive.
A fellow I know, it's more than $100 a month for his...
Well, basically, he must use a lot of water.
Water and sewer. That'd be water and sewer.
He has a boat, I don't know.
Do you have any productive questions?
The fall zone, you know, 150-foot tower's not going to hit you 500 feet away, is it?
Correct. That's correct. It's 150 feet tall, so it wouldn't...
Right. And what is, what would be a reasonable fall zone?
Well, it shouldn't, wouldn't be any more than that.
Rapidly drain or something, what if it were to...
Yeah, there, I mean, defined fall zone, the fall zone would be if it were to tip over, you know, 150 feet from the base. That'd be the only thing I could imagine. The water would obviously gush from there, but you don't even, you don't see water towers coming down in tornadoes. They're designed so that they can withstand those winds and things like that.
I did see one in Sioux Falls that drained on Lewis and Cliff, down, down south. South Cliff Avenue on Lewis Avenue. There was a one that had a lot of water discharged.
Well, they're, they're designed to have an overflow. And that overflow is designed such that it would run down confined space where it can discharge into the ditch, or wherever, that would be able to control that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I do.
Yes.
Sure. I just, I want to clarify. You're saying that the school district did buy additional 20 acres there?
Correct.
That's for future growth, right?
Correct.
They haven't, I mean, they haven't proposed anything at this point?
No, no.
But they do have other sites that they have also bought, too.
They also have a site south on, I think, 41st and Sycamore, somewhere in that area.
20 acres there.
And they're debating whether, which one they're going to build first. Talking with the superintendent last week, they're looking at maybe sometime in the next five years, six years, making that decision.
Alright, thank you.
Could you guys verify, if I'm seeing this right, I think my eyes are just getting bad. Is that 105 feet from the road at the base? Am I reading that right on the drawing?
Right here. It is. I don't know what drawing you're referring to, but the site is about a little over 200 feet square. So, yeah, that would make sense.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we'll close the floor at this time for discussion, or motion for discussion.
I have a question.
I did close the floor, I'm sorry. We'll be alright. Okay, do we have any discussions? I'll stay where I think this is at. I still go back to the fact that, I'll go back to Hartford Sewer District issue. Things for Brandon should be in Brandon. I still think that way. This doesn't change my opinion on this at all. You know, it's really unique in the fact that the Ellefsons came up with an option. That was, that was quite interesting, you know, so they do give them some options. But, like I said, I still think if the school district bought some land, well, then they should talk to the school district and put a water tower on it. I happen to believe that. That's just fine. So, any other comments? Paul?
I think we've already visited this, but as far as in the city limits, I know there's the one water tower that came up in the last discussion, but has there been anything else in the city limits?
Be one last question, and we're going to proceed from this point on. Because we've discussed this ad nauseam.
Inside the city limits, this is just geometrically, and the elevation of this location is conducive for a water tower. This is, as far as looking at other locations within the city, as you go a little bit further south, it actually drops down in elevation quite a bit, so it's more costly if we were to go there. We did look at the site that was inside the city limits that you had referred to, that was much too small for a water tower.
I just didn't know if there had been any others outside of that one that had even been looked at, so... That answers it. Thanks.
So, there's a water tower at 57th and between Cliff and Southeastern that people are building almost directly underneath it, right now, $400,000 houses. That said, you know, I, I would also say that, you know, right over here, there's a 100 and something-foot tower on our courthouse. Over there is a towering cathedral building. It's not ruining anybody's life. These things happen. But I'm, I'm not ready to approve this at this time.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion of any type?
I'll make a motion to deny.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to deny the petition. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Petition, one opposed. Okay. Okay, now we'll move on to our gravel pits. If we only had a dog kennel, we'd have the trifecta.
Dog kennel would just top it off.
That's right.
Is it snowing outside?
Tomorrow, that's tomorrow. You're good. Okay, Scott?
Let me get to the item here. Here we go. Oh, hey, David, can you put this back?
For your record, Scott?
Pardon?
I have extra copies here. David, you want to take these, too?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say, I really like it, although we're not unanimous. I think that it's...
That's just fine. That's what it's supposed to be.
Why have five commissioners and one opinion, or whatever we got here?
Yes, we do.
Okay, this is an item that you, you heard back in, I believe it was October, and... Pardon?
What year?
Last year. And at that time, you recommended denial. The applicant appealed the recommendation to, your recommendation to the county commission. And on November 22nd, the county commission held their hearing on the, this, on your recommendation of denial. There was a lot of testimony. The applicant made some significant proposals to staff and to the county commission. And at the meeting on the 22nd of November, the county commission referred it back to you because it appeared to me that they wanted you to reconsider your request based on the new information that the applicant had provided. And I have included in your packet the letter which... Was, I included a letter that is dated November 14th, 2016. And you, if you had a chance to read through that, you will note that they made some significant offerings of asphalting, putting a four-inch new mat of asphalt down the road. They have expressed a willingness to do dust control. They've expressed a willingness to put up some additional signage. They've also worked with the township, lowering the speed limit. And they have indicated that they would like to have this reviewed in five years to make sure that they are meeting all the conditions of approval, and that they would like to tarp all of their trucks. I, so, I included the minutes from your last meeting, and... So, I, I got to get to my, my conditions here.
Trying to see what condition my condition is at, yeah.
Okay. So, I, what I have done is, on page five of your staff report, I have basically added several conditions. I've, if, should you decide to approve this, we'll have a public hearing tonight, I have prepared a set of conditions that I would suggest. And they are, the addition of number 19, that all of the owner's trucks have to be tarped, and not by a certain date, but immediately. That condition number 20 has been altered, indicating that the applicant has to hard-surface 466th Avenue from where it meets Highway 38 with a new four-inch asphalt surface to a width of 24 feet wide. The asphalt has to be maintained in a good condition as determined by the planning director. Number 21 has been added, that the applicant shall install signs at the end of the hall road, directing truck traffic leaving the pit to turn north and exit on to South Dakota Highway 38. 20, condition number 22 has been added, that the applicant shall pay for the installation of a speed limit sign, 30 miles an hour, on the half-mile of 466th Avenue from South Dakota Highway 38 to the south. Number 23 has been added, that the applicant shall make a review with the planning director in July of 2022. And number 24 has been added, which gives the planning and zoning department the right to enter the, to, oh, sorry, that should say the gravel pit, not home occupation. And with proper notice. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. I think we're familiar with the site and the issues out there.
Any questions with Scott?
Mr. Chair, I'd have one. Scott, I saw here that there was a change in management or ownership of the facility. I think it was 2013. Can you tell us from your recollection, the issues that you were having before, since it was first approved in '06 or '07? The complaints and the constant needing to, in a sense, babysit compared to after 2013, did it improve?
It, it did improve. And I will tell you that we haven't had to do code enforcement on the condition of the road with, under the new ownership or new management of Great Bear.
Okay. Thank you.
But the road is, that half-mile of pavement is not in good condition. So, I know that they, it's sort of, you know, putting a Band-Aid on, on the Titanic. I mean, it just, it's, it's a constant patchwork. And so, I am happy to see that they are really going to address that road because that has been certainly a pain for me because I get calls from the neighbors, I get calls from Hartford Township. And it's, it was always just after them to fix the road, fix the road. And it wasn't necessarily, it was sort of a problem of how the road was originally constructed. They didn't put down enough asphalt. The base probably wasn't compacted to the right consistency or whatever it needed to be to hold the asphalt. So, you had sort of loose gravel, and you put asphalt on top of it. You run heavy trucks on it, and it alligators and breaks up. So, I'm hoping that another four inches will help.
Any other questions, Scott, before we bring the petitioner up?
One more for me, Mr. Chair. If I saw or read correctly in here, DOT has done some reviews, and so this four inches, and I mean, this is something that DOT engineers or somebody has helped review and...
That, that's, that was, that came up at the meeting on the 22nd of November. The county commission asked me to, to contact DOT, asked them to look at that intersection of 466th and Highway 38. I contacted them that afternoon, sent a request off to Brian Van Dam, who's one of the regional engineers. He quickly pointed out, as I knew he would, is that it's not their responsibility to traffic engineering. It, it is our responsibility to require that of the applicant to, if we feel that the land use is such that it should warrant a traffic study, then we should require them to pay for that traffic study. DOT will give you basic information on is the, are the site distances adequate, going this way and looking that way. They will give you a history of accident report. They'll give you a condition of the pavement. But they will not, they will not tell you whether a turn, a turn lane is necessary. They will put that back on us, that we should require that of the applicant.
But even so much as the four-inch?
They won't, they won't, they won't comment on that.
We just haven't found the right person to talk to a DOT yet, then?
Well, for certainly, they wouldn't on that, the four inches of gravel, because that's actually a township road. So, 466th would be, that's why, it's also a situation where I don't think our county highway department's going to want to get involved in taking the responsibility of, of saying it's adequate or not, so...
Thanks.
Petitioner, please come forwards, state your name and address.
The name is Harold Gaden. The address is 3501 River Bluff Road. I'm the owner of First Great Bear Sand and Gravel. After our last meeting, I did some work, and I listened to all the concerns that people had. I tried to address every complaint or condition they had. I went to the township and met with Hartford Township. We sat down and discussed on the four inches of asphalt, of replacing that on there. The existing asphalt's only about two inches. We plan on leaving the existing and adding another four. So, actually, there'll be a patch of two inches, and then six inches. To be a total of six inches. They thought that'd be efficient enough to help it stand up. We're asking for additional 10 years. We, we estimated there'd be in about 750,000-tonne of gravel left on this site. We use currently about 100,000-tonne a year or more. We were asking for 10 years because we want to make sure we don't have to go back and for additional use permit before the job is done. We had letters of support on the gravel pit from several townships, the city of Sioux Falls, and 22 other contractors, people that use the material. It's not an option that we can just go anyplace and open up a gravel pit. We have to go along Skunk Creek because that's the area where there's gravel. There's no gravel in a lot of the other areas. There was mention about a couple accidents along Highway 38. And we did some research on that and found that neither of those accidents had any truck related to them. One guy had fell asleep and hit the bridge, and the other one was a two-car accident. And the speed limit lowering on the new Blacktop Road and a little bit of the gravel was approved by the Hartford Township at their meeting. And that should help when our trucks come onto the road in non-common traffic. If they're going slower, they, they can be curative to each other. I think that's about it.
Questions with petitioner?
If you, if we approve this, and you redo the surface, how much additional traffic from just residential farmers take it? How much will that add to that road? You know, it's all nice, no?
Well, I don't know, Phil, how much additional traffic we'll put on that road because we're blacktop. It's blacktop now, and the people that live down there and down there live, there is other industry, though, happening on that corner. You know, we have a pipe company that moved there two years ago. So, they're using that road. And there's plans for development behind there, and they want to expand. The pipe company wants to expand. So, there's going to be additional traffic on that Blacktop Road.
Thank you.
And I recommend when we get done, if the roads should stay because there's gonna be other commercial properties there before we leave, I'm sure.
One of the conditions that's put in here was requiring a tarping of all trucks. How are you gonna enforce that?
Tarping of the applicant's trucks.
Just the Great Bear Sand and Gravel trucks.
But not everybody's.
Not everybody's, okay.
Okay, that clarifies that for me, thank you. Any other questions, the petitioner, while he's up here?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
So, I drove that road today and it was kind of a roller coaster and, and I went down to the gate actually and I was afraid I'd get stuck with no one for eighty miles around me. I have a two-wheel drive pickup, but that roller coaster, clearly it was kind of just a paved gravel road. If we put four inches of asphalt on it, are we going to build a real road? You know, with a base and all that kind of stuff?
Well, I, I mean, this road's been, gravel trucks been hauling on this road for ten years, you know, and we were patching the asphalt and it's been running on two inches of asphalt for the last ten years. So, the asphalt's been cracking up and we dug all the patches out and we put new base underneath where all the patches where the alligator stuff was and then put four inches of asphalt back in the patch deals. So, if you look at the areas that were patched, which is about sixty percent of the road, we already have extra base in them areas and extra asphalt. And we're hiring a paving company with a lay-down machine to put it down and we put those patches in by hand, so it makes it a lot more wavier.
It's a built-in speed bump.
Questions, the petitioner? Okay. Anyone else in the audience who wants to address this, please come forward. State your name and address.
My name is Gary Meyer. I live on four hundred sixty-sixth Avenue. I live right at the top of the hill on the south end of the pit. And can I ask you guys a question?
Sure, you can always ask questions.
The, this has been denied twice here now. What are your plans when they leave? Because when they leave, the asphalt road goes with them. And there's already a cement plant on that road. What are your plans for that road?
That was, I think, a condition of Hartford Township and not of this board. So, I think that.
No, that was this board.
No, it's not.
It was in their original.
It is not, it is not in the conditions of the approval of this, of this conditions anywhere in here. It says that that road has to be removed.
I, I have a sheet that shows that and I will, I will bring that up. Okay, so say it isn't. Who's going to, Hartford Township says they do not have the equipment to take care of a paved, an asphalt road and Benton Township has said, said the same thing. And I do have papers that show that when the gravel pit leaves, they return the road to gravel. And so, I want to know what are your plans for that and can you do that with another business that's currently out there and has expanded in the years that they've been out there?
So, I would advise, I would ask the commission to closely look at the conditions of approval and there is no, nowhere on any of these conditions does it say that that has to be removed.
These would supersede what was done previously, is that correct?
That's an agreement that the township has struck with the applicant. It's not a condition, we are not party to that agreement. As a county, it's not our agreement.
I totally disagree with that. That was ten years ago, that was, that was very, that was a contested item and that came before this board.
I wrote that report ten years ago. It was never a, a condition of approval ten years ago that that road had to be removed.
Because both townships fought the paving of that road. They fought it and the residents and the gravel company wanted it.
It is an agreement between the applicant, the owner-operator and the townships. It's not an agreement that, that we are obligated to follow or maintain.
You're right, you're right. It's between the township and a previous owner.
Well, the township doesn't take care of it, so who is going to take care of it? The county, the township currently does it just out of courtesy. But I have been to several township meetings and they have, they, they do not have the equipment to repair it, they don't have the money to repair it and they blade it just out of courtesy, they do not sand or salt it. So, when you, when you leave, are you planning to tear up the road?
No.
So, then you need to address who.
I, I think the new agreement I have with the township.
So, the agreement is between him and the township and not the county.
Okay, I know there's an issue there, so that will come up again because the township, I have been to many township meetings and they do not want nothing to do with that asphalt. Like I say, they fought it. It was this, it came to this.
I agree with that, they fought it. I totally agree with him, they fought it.
So, okay.
I was on the board at that time, they did.
Yeah. And, and the other, and the other thing that I, that I'd like to say is I do think you need to approve it. This was started ten years ago. We put up with this for ten years, you need to finish the job. You need to have gravel for economic development and it's, it needs to be, it's, it's gonna either be finished now or later. So, the road's in progress, we finally got a company that's good, it's, it seems easier to work with and so I do think you need to approve it. Your question, Jeff, on is the road a real road? My answer to that would be no, because these guys aren't in the road building business. They asphalted it as a courtesy, as a condition at that time and they, there were no specs put on it. So, they're trying to make the road as best they can, but that's, and the second half of my comment on that is all the tax money that's generated out of this gravel pit, not just from the gravel, but from all the businesses that use gravel, all the residential homes that pay taxes, that need gravel to build their homes. I think this body needs to step forward and help pay for this road, help pay for some of the upkeep. Because without the gravel pit, you lose a lot of taxes. I live out there and I have not seen any of my tax dollars go back into that road. And traffic, you commented on the traffic. I don't think the asphalt increases the traffic. I think economic development increases the traffic. That is the first through road, once you get on this side, the interstate from Hartford and a lot of people take that. I see more eighteen-wheelers, garbage trucks, cement trucks, utility trucks. Traffic has increased tenfold out there in the last ten, twenty years. And it is a roller coaster road and that's an issue beyond the gravel pit. That has nothing to do with the gravel pit. It's something that I want on the record that someday you guys are gonna need to address that. And I really feel like it should be a county or a state road and something, something needs to be done. It's a dangerous road for them, for that kind of traffic.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
So, the townships can petition to have the county take over any road, whether or not we do, then has to get approved by the state, et cetera. I happen to know that our county, along with many other counties, are, are looking at allowing some of our paved roads to go back to gravel. So, but I, this one here looks like it could be in a busier location going forward. The townships can petition to, I think that we did that for the road from McCrossan's up to two fifty-eight or whatever it is towards Crooks.
Which is Marion Road.
Yeah. Anyway, I, I think either A, it's gonna go back to, to gravel or B, somebody will take, assume control.
I guess, you know, just because Hartford Township isn't set up to maintain asphalt, which is correct, it doesn't mean that there aren't townships out there in this, in this county that do maintain asphalt. I mean, Mapleton Township has asphalt roads and I think this, I think we need to look at this as a bigger picture, not, not, I'm, I'm moving on past the gravel pit, but I think this is an economic growth area because you're at the interstate or interchange of an interstate. And I, I, that the cement casting company or whatever it's called Comcast or C, what's it?
Comcast.
It's gonna, it's gonna attract other businesses and I think that, that ultimately that road is gonna be needed. I think ultimately Hartford, someone's gonna have to set up, step up and do the maintenance of that road, but, you know, it's, I don't think that we can pin the, the approval or denial of this petition on what's gonna happen to that road in ten years.
That's my point exactly. That's, that's where I'm coming from. I'm saying you've got a bigger issue. The road is an issue, but it goes beyond the gravel pit. And as far as, and, and then what I was trying to tie into there is the building of the road shouldn't be a hundred percent shouldered on one company as there's also, there's another company out there using it and there's many more companies that are using the road just to get from point A to point B that didn't used to use it.
Well, and Hartford's growing, I mean, Hartford is increasing population and Sioux Falls is moving in that direction, it's, you know.
Yeah. So, that, that's the point I wanted to make. And the speed limit signs, as far as I'm concerned, you can, you can throw them out. The trucks aren't going eighty miles an hour on that half a mile of road.
They'd fly apart if they tried it.
What's that?
They'd break up if they tried it.
Well, yeah. Well, it's just a half a mile of road. The speed isn't the problem. If anything, you need to trade there again, you need to work with the state, lower the speed limit on Highway thirty-eight because you're coming under that bridge at sixty-five miles an hour, that corner does come up quick. It may, your sight of vision may be far enough, but it, I think you need to work with the state, not have them and take that requirement off of these guys, it's an expense I don't really think is needed. It's, it's nice they volunteered, they're working with us. And the tarping the trucks the same way. As far as us that live out there, tarping the trucks won't do anything for us. It's a stipulation that, again, they're, they're working with you guys, that shows they're, they're willing to do that, but as far as those of us that live out there, that's, that does nothing for us. So, I guess that's all I had.
Thank you. Anyone else care to address this issue?
I would.
Yes?
I think that Harry Gayden and this particular group has stepped forward from what happened a couple months ago that we deferred it. You are doing, I, I think what you need to for the people out there concerning the roadways. You know, it is, as long as I can see, it is still a township road and, and you are trying to work with them. That shows that you are a good neighbor and that's, you know, you've tried to address it sounds like just about all the issues that came up. So, I would make a motion that we approve this.
Well, there may be more.
Well, we have, anyone else want to address this first before we get to the motions or motions for discussion? There's one condition here I think should, maybe should be modified.
Name your modified.
Number twenty-three, that's a five-year review. Well, if it's been a problem in the past, why do you wait five years to review it?
I was gonna say the same thing.
It should be like a year.
I was gonna kind of pose that towards Scott too if, as far as some of these things that, that are in here, if it's approved as such, we should know a lot sooner than five years, would be my thought.
Maybe two years or one year, whatever you're.
Mr. Chair?
Come back up.
I think we can probably just take it out. Maybe, maybe we should just take that out being they already added the bottom one that they can come and inspect the pit. On the bottom deal, the planning and zoning has right.
The bottom was just to ensure we can go out there anytime for enforcement.
Right.
But, so if they never hear of anything for five years, that's really good, but it might be nice as a reassurance since this is, you know, a new thing or, you know, a new conditional use, that after a year we go out and see, okay, this thing, are things being followed accordingly? That's all that is. Mr. Chairman?
We, we just put the five years in there so you guys had a chance to come because I didn't know you were gonna be able to come and see the pit.
I think one year is gonna be too short because one year is gonna put it right back in the middle of January, so I would say like July of twenty eighteen, which would be like a year and a half.
That seems to make sense, that seems reasonable. I mean, then at le, then at least we know you're gonna be able to double-check everything that's in here, just based on the history. I mean, it sounds like you're certainly trying to do the right thing, but due diligence on our part.
Yes?
So, it seems that the current operator is doing a much better job than the previous one and I wonder if when there's a change of operator, should there ever be another one if we shouldn't have it come back for review at that time?
Is there any way this could be contingent upon this operator only?
Sure, I think you can do that.
I mean, it's just like when.
Not to say the next operator's bad, but I mean.
But he needs to know what the conditions are.
Yeah.
Good point.
Wouldn't that make sense? Because, I mean, just like a home occupation thing, that goes away with the person goes away.
You're writing this additional use permit for the Gussens or Great Bear Sand Gravel?
Well, I know that's also a problem when you have the owners, have the owner-operators.
I think that, you know, we've revised our conditional use permits that we can do recalls just like we did tonight and I think that if there is a problem, it's easier now just to recall it and, and I, I think the mechanism is there that we can prod them along a little bit if there's problems.
Well, this is, this is good discussion, like I say, we don't have these very often, so.
Is number twenty-three, otherwise I'm ready to move approval.
Maybe based on Scott's comments, maybe the twenty-eighteen is more push than we need, based on what you just said, if there are problems.
Well, you know what, I, I would just leave it in there, I can make a report and let the planning commission know that the signs are up, that the, the road is in good condition. It's just, I think it'd be a good, a good review and I think that's gonna help calm some of the neighbors. Because the, the person that is probably the most interested in this, Celia Benson, who gave us a nice PowerPoint presentation at the county commission meeting, was unable to attend tonight, she may appeal this, but she was very happy to know that there's eyes on it and so this might help her feel better that we're gonna review it in a year and a half.
I think I appreciate the eighteen-month stipulation.
So, I'll change twenty-three to show eighteen-month review? And with that amendment, I would make a motion to approve the conditions as amended.
Do you have a second?
Second.
With approval overall.
Okay, so a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We go to staff reports, is there any?
Well, the next item, where are we at?
Eleven, I think. Somewhere.
Okay, new business. We have a presentation for you on the capo and pop-up culture proposal, but it's rather lengthy.
I'm not sure we should do that tonight. Pay any capos or sand things for next time.
No, I don't know.
No water towers either?
No water towers either, so we'll probably be good.
Should we just continue?
Yeah, don't worry, that'll be fine.
We do have it, it'll give you an extra time to review it because we, we've been working with Paul and Jeff Bard to talk about maybe addressing some of our setback requirements just like we dealt with today and we are looking at revising how we deal with chickens.
You're talking like backyard chickens and developments? Huge, big things.
But I do have a couple things I want to give you before you leave. So, you can pass these out. I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update on building permit activity.
I already got this one.
So, if you just pass those, this is mine. And I also have prepared a work plan for, for the planning department like I did last year, if you recall, I sort of outlined a few things that we need to go, that we'll be working on. And you can just, these are just for your review. I think it's very interesting if you look at the number of houses that Hartford has constructed. I passed these out here.
I'm sorry.
That's right. This is.
For sixty-three, oh my.
And then I also, there was a. This, this is the county, we did forty-seven million dollars worth of building permit activity from the county and we compile all this information. We compile all this information and then we do a population projection and David did that and he came up with a population of one eighty-three, six hundred something for the city of Sioux Falls. For Minnehawke County, sorry.
That was the county?
Just Minnehawke County.
Okay. Metro area.
So, construction value is forty-seven million, did you get four hundred and seventy thousand dollars for your office to operate?
No, because it's not one percent, it's not all commercial. Do you want to pull up the, the mini-maps for this? The last thing I was gonna tell you, just FYI, the city of Crooks has adopted a joint plating jurisdiction, which you may have read in the news and I met with the mayor on Friday, we're gonna be revising this because it's fairly unmanageable because.
They're going to take out the curvy, wavy stuff.
Yeah, square it up.
Yeah. Julie Ristie said it couldn't be done.
It's difficult. It's difficult.
Or, yeah, and she was looking at them pay for it.
I also, uh, the commission office and my office also got an email from Hartford, they would like to enact joint zoning control. So, the good news is, um, that potentially you could have five joint planning commission meetings in a month, in, in, in one night, uh, because it...
Just re-upped.
Sure that if...
I wonder he's retiring.
Crooks is very, um, interested in also doing joint zoning control, because they're very, they're, they have...
Many of their mayor.
The, the mayor is very concerned about this, the growth of the city of Sioux Falls, and that it's gonna cut into their, a gateway of their community, so, um, I did meet with the mayor, several of us met with the mayor, we encouraged him to work with the city of Sioux Falls to, uh, to, um, maybe have a, a unified plating jurisdiction, similar to the one that Brandon in Sioux Falls has, which, if, if you look at this, well, um, yeah, so, um, that, I, 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 answer any questions you have, but other than that, um...
Well, initially, see the livestock stuff makes sense.
Yeah, and then with that...
We'll give you some extra time to read through that.
Something I would mention on that, Scott, I called DNR up again today just to verify, and when it comes to the aquaculture stuff, whether it's salmon or if it's shrimp, like we've been talking about, for them, that's gonna be, of anything that they can imagine, isn't gonna be treated like a CAFO, won't have a general permit tied to it, it'd be strictly more of a, a water quality in and water quality out discharge type of thing for any wastewater, so. I think you guys probably already knew that, but I know we've been discussing it, and I know Jeff's dying to find out animal units for shrimp, but I just wanted to let you know the DNR's saying, don't bother.
The other thing just came to my attention, uh, it's a fellow, it's a relative house built in seventy-five, which basically repealing authorities for cities that exercise, basically joint zoning, um, so that's just...
Was there anything else in that, that it did, that I...
That's everything.
That was all I saw, is that it did that. Do you guys have any idea why?
I have no idea.
Where it comes from?
Who proposed it? It'd be interesting...
I was gonna say, who would propose that?
There's probably a handful of...
A handful of folks on there.
Probably West River.